Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is June 27, 2018. We're holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Frank Clark. On behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. Our order of business will be as follows. Honor and excellence, followed by the CEO report, followed by public participation, executive session, and then we will return to start our voting process. We have a lot to cover today, and I think there are a lot of very, very difficult issues that will be discussed. And as much as ever, courteous and civil behavior is requested and expected. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, June 27, 2018, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong.
Present.
A member Garza.
Present.
A member Dr. Hines.
Present.
A member Ward.
Present.
President Clark.
Present.
Five members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Dr. Janice Jackson, our CEO, Joseph Moriarty, our General Counsel, Latonya McDade, our Chief Education Officer, and Anna Alvarado, the Chief of Teaching and Learning. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to begin with honor and excellence. Latonya.
Good morning. We begin every Board of Education meeting by recognizing the accomplishments of our students and school communities. Today, we are excited to welcome several students who have done exemplary work in mastering multiple languages. In addition to the state seal of bili literacy, which recognizes high school students who have demonstrated proficiency in English and at least one other language, CPS has created a Seal of Bili Literacy Pathway Award, which honors elementary school students who have excelled in their world language and dual language programs. We are fortunate to have several of these students with us today. Let's start with the CPS 5th graders, who earned the highest results citywide on the CPA CPS Pathways Assessment. Please join me in welcoming Yanni Ocampo from the Academy of Global Citizenship, Christopher Escobar from Calmecca Elementary, and Gabriela Rivera Lopez from Carson Elementary.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Yanni Ocampo y vengo de la Academia de la Ciudadanía Global. Quiero agradecer por este reconocimiento que me han otorgado y además agradecer a mis padres y a mi maestra por todo el apoyo que me han brindado. Gracias.
All right, President Clark, would you like to address the students?
Let me first ask if any of the board members wants to make a comment before I do.
Yes.
Muchisimas gracias a usted y a la familia por lo que han este por la de excelencia, lo que han hecho en sus estudios, y esperemos que continúen con esa esas calificaciones y con el apoyo de las familias. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
As you leave, as you leave the podium, in America, many, many of us only speak one language, and even that, we don't speak all that well. I really admire and respect people who have the capability of speaking multiple languages. And of course, in this city, and frankly, in this country, having people that are bilingual that also speak Spanish is just outstanding. So, they walked out now, but...
Their parents heard you.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations, parents.
And we have another group of young people that are bilingual as well. Next, let's welcome the 8th graders, who earned the highest results citywide on their level of the pathways assessment. These young people include Marlene Guadian from Acero Marquez, Crystal Pinalosa from Whittier Elementary, Jason Velazquez from Inter-American, Deisi Magdaleno from Volta Elementary, Luis Perez from Acero Marquez, and Leslie Villarreal from Inter-American.
My name is Marlene Guadian. I just graduated from Acero Marquez. I will be entering the Lawrenceville School in New Jersey this fall. It's an honor to say that not one, but two students from Marquez will receive this award. I want to thank all of the people who have stood behind me and every other 8th grader around me. It's been a privilege to have the opportunity to grow up in a bilingual home. Mi nombre es Marlene Guadian. Acabo de graduarme de la escuela Acero Marquez. Este otoño ingresaré en la Lawrenceville School in New Jersey. Es un honor poder decir que no nada más una, pero dos estudiantes de Marquez han recibido este honor. Quiero darle las gracias, quiero darle las gracias a toda la gente que han ayudado a mí y a todos los estudiantes aquí. Ha sido un privilegio crecer en un hogar bilingüe. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Members, comments?
Felicidades a ustedes y también a sus papás por el apoyo que han tenido durante sus años en la escuela, y esperemos que tengan más éxitos en el futuro. Gracias.
And I agree with everything that was just... It's a wonderful accomplishment and deserves real recognition. Thank you so much.
And finally, it's my pleasure to welcome one high school student who did more than graduate with the state seal of bili literacy. Along with seven of his peers, Lane Tech's Matthew Migley, earned the state seal of bili literacy in multiple languages. Matthew's languages of choice were German and French. Please help me welcome this outstanding 2018 graduate.
Good morning, board members. I first of all, want to thank CPS and Lane Tech for providing excellent opportunity in diversity of languages. At Lane, we offer over nine languages. And when I was coming into high school, I had just known French. And when I came in, I started with no German experience whatsoever. And Lane provided the opportunity to take APs in both German and French. And I ended up getting high scores in both, had the opportunity to go on international field trips, and expanded my horizons in terms of cultural and linguistic understanding. So, I want to thank CPS and Lane for that exceptionally. Thank you.
Do you... Give us a sentence in both languages. I took French in high school. I'm trying to see if I remember any of it.
I would like to thank you for this opportunity.
Sounds good.
I would like to thank you for this opportunity.
Your accent is excellent. Thank you.
What did you say?
Tell us what you said in English.
I said, I wish to thank you for this opportunity.
Oh.
Well said. No, congratulations. Thank you very much.
It's a lot of pressure representing all this.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Ernesto, if you wouldn't mind, just maybe you and your team saying a little bit about the efforts that we've made with regard to second language acquisition, as well as supporting our EL students, because this is a remarkable accomplishment. And I know this program has grown exponentially under your leadership and the former chief officer's leadership. So, if you could just say a little bit about it, and even a little bit more about our plans going forward, how we want to expand this in some of our underrepresented communities.
So, as CEO Janice has said, we are expanding into eight additional dual language schools for next year. So, it'll be a planning year. Then, at the end of that year, we reevaluate, then they start implementing the following year for year 2019. We have a $2 million proposal. The $2 million proposal is to expand our world languages into the West Side and South Side. We had only 11 African-American students earn the seal of bili literacy this year, 1.2% of the total. And so, it's our hearts' desire to follow the dream of both our CEO and our CDO, that we present this opportunity for our West Side and South Side schools. And so, if everything goes well, there'll be 10 elementary schools with world languages. I am not privileged to Spanish, honestly. I want to find the teachers who can do this. We will support them every month, because I hope that in the future, every CPS student has the opportunity to earn the seal of bili literacy and show that they can compete in two languages, right? Because we really need that. As far as the seal of bili literacy this year, Luis Narváez is our Director of Strategic Partnerships, and some of the things that he did, I'll let him speak to real quick.
Thank you, Dr. Matias. We engage with the foreign consulate generals here, the president in Chicago as well, to help us expand the program, gain support from the universities back at home. And we also engage more with both students, teachers, as well as the parents that these students have been growing up with, because the parents also are supporting this bilingual education and dual education. So, it's been truly a community effort in all parts.
And so, the other part of what we do is with the parents, the CMPC parents, and inviting them to take this journey with us. We share data with them. We do professional develop with them. We give them data so that they can see what's going on in the schools, and they could be strong advocates for our program. Hilda Peña is the one who runs it, so I'll give her a couple of words.
Hello, everyone. As a matter of fact, today, the parents who were present here, their kids are the ones who have the higher achievement test scores. And usually, they participate a lot. They get involved in these initiatives about the world language and the dual language and the seal of bili literacy. Thank you.
And so, in conclusion, next year, as we plan for the eight and hopefully the additional schools for the West Side and South Side, we also know that the other part of that is, how do we improve native language instruction, right? Because the research is very clear, that if we improve native language instruction to transition into second language being English, that the achievement gap does not exist, right? And so, our plan is to really do a deeper dive into the instructional components. And we are partnering with Karen Beaman, as well as the Erickson Institute, to provide coaching. Our hope is that by the end of next year, at least 280 bilingual teachers will receive coaching. And so, we should see those metrics rise. Ultimately, it's about all students, like we're saying. That is our vision. All students, irrespective of where they come from in Chicago, not only having a quality education, traditional, but also having the opportunity to speak two languages. Our mayor talks about an international city. Those of you guys who've traveled to Europe knows that you cannot have an international city and have a monolingual citizenship of that city. So, the future hope is that a true international city, where every person in Chicago in the future can speak two or more languages, will bring us to the vision of a comprehensive quality education for all of our kids. Thank you.
Before you leave, what do you think CPS can do to make the opportunity to become fluid in a second language more universal? It is my sense that a large segment of our population may not, you know, value actually the opportunity of learning a second language and seeing the opportunity that it gives you beyond your CPS experience.
I think that one of the biggest things that we're doing currently, right now, with our CEO and CDO's support, is the realization that we need to be a little bit more aggressive in creating not only the professional development, but expanding our purview, right? We have to change the fixed mindsets of monolingualism. Let me give you another statistics. Of the kids where parents have refused bilingual services, over 3,000 kids, 41% end up with an IEP, and the majority end up dropping out of school. And so, with the CDO's blessing, we're looking into data even more regularly, so that we can put that out. But I honestly believe that the support that they're providing us, and then futuristically, as we think of new ways of increasing local funding for expansion of world language programs with the existing partnerships that we have, we're going to do it. It's going to take time, because the growth mindset piece, it's a difficult one. And I think data, consistently putting data in front of people, so they can see, no, second language is an asset. It's not a deficit, right? And anyone can do this would be one of the ways that we're supporting the work through the approval and the supports of our CEO and our...
The younger people are, the easier it is, I think, the more likely they'll succeed and become influential. How early do we start offering the opportunity for a second language?
So, we have 35 dual language schools currently with the new additions, and we start at pre-K.
You do start that early.
Absolutely. And so, the challenge with our $2 million proposal, if we can find certified, early childhood certified teachers, we can then start it in pre-K. But if we can't, starting it in third grade and moving on through, by the time they're seniors, we should see more African-American and others earning the seal of bili literacy in Chicago. So, I hope that in years to come, we will be in, like, leading the nation in what it means to have a district that's fully bilingual, that every student has that opportunity and earning the seal of bili literacy for the majority of our students. The other thing I would say, this with the support of our CEO and our CDO, next year, we're hoping to offer language classes to central office after school, two times a week for 60 minutes. So, there will be a survey coming out just for central office, because their vision is that when anyone calls, any secretary here can be able to say, claro que sí, voy a ponerte. Absolutely, yes, I'm going to connect you, right? That's the dream. And I'm just showing you, they're visionaries when it comes to this. They fully embrace it, and we fully have their supports.
Well, you're doing very important work. I'm not sure if fully appreciated by the broader population, because again, in this country, you know, we don't always value second languages, but focus strictly on Chicago and our population, it's so essential. And I know the opportunities it creates for you in your professional life. So, we have to figure out a way to make sure you get all the support you need. Dr... Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, thank you very much for making our community even, even larger and smaller by bringing in world languages. I always dreamt that it would be so wonderful for our students to give them as many opportunities as they can to speak the language.
Right.
And you just mentioned Chicago being an international city. Wouldn't it be wonderful to have our students perhaps provide tours in the language of our visited international guests and do things like that? Look forward to hearing more about it and to supporting the program.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I want to commend Dr. Matisse, because for the past three years, I worked with them. And this has been a vision of his, and he's been working very hard. He's an exemplar, chief, and I want to commend you for pursuing this.
Thank you very much.
I just want to echo that. Thank you so much, Ernesto, Hilda, Luis, and your entire team for the critically important work that you're doing. I think we obviously know that the language skills that our students acquire makes, not only makes them more marketable in a 21st century global society, but it also is representative of the future, that is more welcoming and inclusive of other cultures, nationalities, and languages. So, thank you so much for your work. And can we have another round of applause for our stellar language students? I'll now turn things over to CEO Janice Jackson, who has an update on our comprehensive action plan for protecting all CPS students.
Thank you, Chief McDade. First of all, really excited about the honoring excellence session that we just had. It's always a highlight, not only of the board meeting, but quite frankly, of the month for me. It's always nice to be reminded of the best and brightest here in our district, but it's also my responsibility as CEO to address some of the issues that we face as a school system head-on in these meetings. So, as we transition, I'd like to provide an update to the board, as well as the public that is present today, around our efforts to reduce the likelihood of students being abused, or sexually harassed, or experience any type of sexual violence in our school system. As I've stated on many occasions, I take full responsibility for addressing these longstanding issues, and I've made addressing all aspects of this situation a top priority for me. I continue to message directly to parents that I won't be satisfied until I'm confident that the district is doing everything within its power to make sure that our district is free of sexual abuse, harassment, and violence towards students. We continue to act swiftly and decisively, because we know that our students cannot afford to wait. CPS earlier this month introduced a plan of action, which we continue to update the public on, on a regular basis. As a reminder, we've brought in Maggie Hickey, a former U.S. Attorney and Illinois Executive Inspector General, to conduct a top-to-bottom review of all of our systems, policies, and procedures in the district. And she has been giving us recommendations that, in an ongoing manner. And again, I made a public commitment to share those recommendations in their entirety at the end of this summer. Just to recap, we've committed to recheck the backgrounds of all adults in our schools before the start of the school year. This includes employees, volunteers, vendors, as well as local school council members. We've also launched a partnership with Chicago Children's Advocacy Center to better train our staff and also support students who are victims of sexual abuse, violence, or harassment. We have transferred investigative duties to the Office of the Inspector General to ensure that cases are handled in a way that eliminates any perceived conflict of interest, and a proposal for that is going to be voted on by our board today. We have revised the district's policy on reporting child abuse and neglect, and we require employees to also report inappropriate student and staff relationships and anything that signals grooming. Again, the board will be asked to vote on that policy as well today. Finally, this morning, I announced that we will be taking an unprecedented step as a district in forming an Office of Student Protections in Title IX. This 20-member team will be responsible for referring allegations of adult-on-student abuse to the Office of the Inspector General for investigation. They will be responsible for overseeing investigations into allegations of student-on-student abuse, as well as ensuring that students are paired with immediate support from an advocate at the time of an incident, and also providing long-term support. In addition to ensuring that CPS complies with all tenants of Title IX, which protects students from any form of discrimination in educational programming, this office will also have a major role in providing training to members of the CPS community, to ensure that everyone recognizes their role in identifying, preventing, reporting, and responding to sexual harassment, misconduct, and abuse. This new office will be formed this summer, and the officer of that team will report directly to me. And to ensure that our progress is transparent, this team will collect and share information with the public on a regular basis, and make sure that appropriate notifications at the school level happen in every single case. We have a lot of work to do, and we encourage our families to stay updated. We have created a page on our website at www.cps.edu/protectingstudents. We also continue to provide updates through social media, as well as through our direct email system to parents over the summer. I want to close by stating that as the CEO of Chicago Public Schools, as well as a parent of two students in the district, this is something that I take very seriously. I've said over and over again, we know that these problems are pervasive in American culture. This is not just a CPS issue, but it is my intention to make CPS a model for how to address this and really change the culture within our district, so that fewer students are exposed to this type of violence. Again, as we talk about student-on-student abuse today and the team that we introduced today, it's my goal that we create a generation that is better prepared to address these issues in the future. I believe by not only addressing the adult-on-student issues, but also addressing the student-on-student issues, we have an opportunity to raise a generation that better understands what's appropriate and what's inappropriate. President Clark, that concludes my portion of the CEO's report. I'd like to turn it back over to Chief McDade, unless there are any questions from the board regarding our progress towards protecting Chicago students.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Jackson? I have one question, or actually, it's a comment. I use the term grooming, and while I think the vast majority of people understand what that term is, I'm not sure everyone does. Would you give an explanation of what grooming is and why it's so important?
We're actually going to do a presentation that goes into depth, so I don't want to steal Matt's thunder, unless he'd like me to. But essentially, it focuses on inappropriate relationships between students and adults, but Matt will go into depth during his presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And I would like to publicly state also, in support of our CEO and service to our students in our district in this capacity, I want to state my commitment to getting this right. We will leave no stone unturned in making sure that we do everything possible to protect all of our students. Earlier this week, Chicago Teachers Union President Karen Lewis announced that she will be retiring from the classroom. And on behalf of the CEO, I would like to thank her for her service and support of Chicago's educators and students. As we wrap up the school year, I would also like to thank all of our educators, families, and partners for the roles they played in another successful school year. Our students have continued to show outstanding growth academically, and their progress has made CPS a national leader in urban education. Our goal now is to build on their momentum, which already has us looking at improvements that we can make for the upcoming school year. Let me start by outlining the changes we'll be making to our district's network support model. The goal of CPS Networks is to support the unique needs of each school. And we all know that those needs are markedly different, depending on the age of the students. So, to better target our instructional supports, we will be adding four new networks exclusively for CPS high schools. All elementary schools will remain in their current networks, which will now have a smaller chief-to-principal ratio, and will be able to focus exclusively on the needs of our elementary school students. All high schools will be placed in one of four new high school networks, and will receive support from staff who are experts on instruction and operation for grades nine through 12. We will share more information with families as this project unfolds, and we're confident that it will be a positive organizational change. Today, we are asking the board to approve changes to the district's policy on the reporting of child abuse and neglect. These changes include several additional layers of protection for students, including adding grooming as a form of sexual abuse, requiring retraining of employees annually, and providing supports to students. Along with Matt Lyons, our Chief Officer of Talent, I'd like to brief the board on this important proposed policy update. Matt? We will begin with an overview of our current law and board policy. Illinois law, for Illinois law, the Abused and Neglected Child Reporting Act requires that all school district employees in Illinois immediately report suspected child abuse or neglect to DCFS. In reviewing our current board policy on the reporting of child abuse and child neglect that was adopted in its current form in July 2008, it also requires similar mandatory reporting to DCFS, and outlines in detail how reports of abuse or neglect should be handled by district and school staff. Matt will cover nine main components of the revised policy, which include definitions, training, reporting reasonable suspicion of child abuse and neglect, providing supports to students and how we plan to do that, reporting of grooming and inappropriately intimate behavior, so detailing and describing what grooming constitutes, what that constitutes in the district, cooperating with DCFS and other agencies, as well as internal reporting and investigations, along with penalties and delegation. So, Matt, would you please take us through each of the nine components?
Sure. Good morning. The policy goes beyond what I'll talk about today. I'm going to cover the highlights, but it's a little more detailed than what we'll discuss today. It starts by discussing definitions. The longstanding definitions include, obviously, definitions of what abuse is or neglect is in accordance with the state law and its definition. Today, we're asking to adopt an amendment that explicitly calls out and defines grooming as a form of sexual abuse. Grooming, based on definitions from the Department of Justice, as well as medical societies, others, defined as behavior, a set of behaviors, that an adult uses to build an emotional connection or trust with children, and break down their inhibitions with the purpose of sexually abusing them. This is predatory behavior, and we want to make very clear that this is a form of sexual abuse, and as we'll talk about later, requires reporting under the law and under CPS policy immediately to DCFS. There are examples of such things that can be grooming behavior in the policy, and they're listed on the slide, but what's most important is that this is a pattern of behavior. Any individual act that might be an example does not necessarily constitute grooming. These are, this is a collection of behaviors. We'll come back to that topic as we move to reporting, but the second section of the policy addresses training. The main amendment that we're looking at adding is a requirement that we will retrain all employees of the district, all mandated reporters under the law, annually. Currently, the policy does not require retraining, and this goes beyond state law, but would ensure that no employee does not have this reminded, or as a reminder, annually by going through training. There's also a new clause in the policy that we're asking to be inserted to instruct the district to create and train all of the appropriate employees on guidelines for investigating, sorry, for investigating allegations of child abuse, to come up with a standard for how this occurs. The third area is the most commonly known one around mandated reporting, and it requires currently that a mandated reporter call DCFS immediately upon having any suspicion of child abuse or neglect. It also goes on currently to say that that mandated reporter may notify their principal, but it is not required. And it clarifies that notifying the principal or supervisor is not a fulfillment of their legal obligation to report the incident to DCFS. So we want there to be no confusion that notifying a principal is not sufficient. That is not what the law requires. We are asking that we amend our policy today to require that after notifying DCFS of child abuse or neglect suspicions, that an employee does notify their supervisor, and that they must. If they do not feel comfortable notifying their supervisor or principal, then they would go to that principal or supervisor's manager, or the network chief or chief officer. The reason for this is that we, as a district, and principals in their schools are responsible for the safety and well-being of the students and their care, and we cannot, while DCFS runs their process, and we want to support that, and we'll talk about cooperating with their processes, we have to make sure that principals are enabled to take action that puts the safety of their students first. And so we can't rely solely on an external agency to find out about any allegations that occur at a school. The amendments also clarify that the principal has a role in gathering information in these incidents in order to enable us and DCFS and law enforcement in the appropriate contexts to take action, but clarifies that principals are not trained investigators and should not be investigating. They should be gathering information, and there will be more training and guidelines to come relating to what I mentioned earlier around guidelines for investigating allegations.
Matt, on just that point, because of the new and enhanced role that the Inspector General will play and will have in this and their responsibilities, are we also training our principals so they know where to go, and our teachers?
Yes, absolutely. This is, what we are talking about today in terms of the policy will be rolled out as part of the training prior to the start of the school year to all school staff.
Okay.
The fourth area of the policy, of the revised policy, addresses providing supports to students. The current policy has many of these same attributes, but we tried to clarify them and put them all in one section. So principals already have the responsibility, excuse me, to call 911 if students are in need of immediate medical attention. They also have an obligation not to allow students to return home if the principal believes that is a dangerous situation, and have notification requirements to each of the other adults who are the students' teachers. We are adding an obligation to assign a school mental health professional to support the students and to call the CPS Crisis Management Team, which is a partnership between the Safety and Security Office and the Office of Social Emotional Learning.
Again, Matt, I want to emphasize this point. With these policy changes, there's no discretion at the local level, typically schools, with respect to what reporting is required.
That is correct. So the, and this goes beyond just this policy, but what we are looking to do is take the discretion out where it should not be. Manded reporting already did not have discretion when someone had suspicions of child abuse or neglect, and there are protocols in the current policy. We are trying to clarify some of them in the revised policy, and as we're going to get to now, take out ambiguity where there was no language previously.
And this is particularly the adult-on-student component. We're working closely with the new responsibilities of the IG.
We are working closely with the Inspector General on defining what these protocols and processes will look like for adult-to-student abuse cases, but this policy addresses any abuse of a child and is beyond just sexual abuse.
Well, yes. Okay. I'm sorry, Matt. Going back to grooming, I think that heightened awareness and the expanded reach and training that we're providing around this issue, because I don't think it's always obvious to people who just don't know what they're seeing. Are we also sharing this information with parents? We send, Dr. Jackson sends letters from time to time, communications to the parent population. Frankly, parents are probably more knowledgeable and understand this issue on guard than anybody. Nevertheless, you know, literally a term like grooming and all the things that it consists of probably is useful to share.
Yeah, so as part of actually the Title IX Office, sorry, the Student Protection and Title IX Office, that is a responsibility that will be fulfilled by that office, which is making sure that there is training and awareness, not just for school staff, but for all the adults that are in our school communities, which certainly includes parents and families. The fifth section is a new section of this mandated reporter policy, and it goes, intersects with, but goes beyond what state law requires. As I said earlier, any grooming is considered child abuse by DCFS and requires mandatory reporting to DCFS. What we ask and clarify in this section of the policy is that employees must report to their principal what we are calling inappropriately intimate behaviors between an adult and a student that may not rise to the level of suspecting child abuse or neglect, or if what they, what information or observations they have, if they're not sure whether it should constitute suspicion of child abuse or neglect. Taking a step to call DCFS is required when you suspect child abuse or neglect, but I do not want anyone to pretend that that is a call that any adult makes lightly in protection of a student. And so if there is any doubt about what they have or haven't seen, we are requiring employees under this amended policy to report it to their principal and for the principal to file an incident report similarly to how we would file other school-level incidents. And that principal then has another opportunity, once the requirement is made, that the principal is reported to, that principal has an opportunity to also decide whether there is suspected child abuse or neglect and notify DCFS. The added benefit, though, is that what we unfortunately see is that there are frequently warning signs that do not rise to the level of someone having a reasonable suspicion of abuse, but that if three separate people have kind of below-abuse-level indications that there's an inappropriate relationship, if those are never reported, then we don't know that there are red flags and to take preventative action, which is obviously what we're always striving to do.
Without going into any confidential details that would compromise anything that we're doing or violating someone's legal rights, give us some, you know, give us an example of what you're referring to right now.
So a teacher might walk down the hallway and glance into a closed classroom and see an adult and a student sitting close together and think it's weird. I hesitate to make light of it for obvious reasons, but adults in schools, adults in most places, know when they see something that doesn't seem right. And our goal is to start to build a culture of when you see something that you don't know is right, to say something, and the worst thing that happens is that it gets reported and checked out, and everyone moves on because we can be assured that it's healthy. But when those kinds of small observations aren't communicated, then they have the opportunity to persist.
Do we have general policies across CPS with adult actions with students? For example, some kids are driven to school, but not necessarily by their parents. How would we view that?
So we have guidelines for maintaining professional boundaries between adults and students, and those are things we're examining, again, in the course of the top-to-bottom review. There are, notwithstanding the transportation issue that you just mentioned, there are, there may be a-
I've had that in a very generic way.
There may be a context where an adult and a student could be in a closed room together. That's not my area of expertise on what would constitute that, but I think the idea is a recognition that there are not always bright lines, but we can't raise red flags and actually take preventative action unless we are cognizant of the gray area and that people start to come forward and are actually required to come forward and report those things and get them checked out.
Matt, fair to say that there will be some reporting that will be, it will turn out that the allegation was just incorrect, and so we're willing to err on the side of over-reporting to ensure that we get 100% of accurate cases reported.
That's right. We have to come down on the side of students' safety, and we have had incidents of those, or I should say, we have had events where something has been reported to us. On its face, maybe it looks like grooming, and we have looked through, and that is not what is happening, and the student comes forward and says that's not what's happening, and we have evidence about what is happening, and it's, you know, it is appropriate. So, yes, we want over-reporting.
Matt, when, in this Part C here, when a principal files the incident report, do they, they're aware of where those incident reports should go?
Yes, it's the same incident reporting system as, which is in the process of being replaced over the next 12 months, but, or shorter than that. But yes, it is one incident reporting system for all incidents.
Matt, I'm thinking of different types of examples. Students need special tutoring. Teachers are actually, even on their own time, are reaching out, trying to help students to succeed, and often, that could be a one-on-one situation. That seems to be quite normal to me, and yet with our, I think, enhanced scrutiny, which as Mark pointed out, is better to err on the side of over-reporting, because you don't want to ever make a mistake, and mistakes have been made, and under-reporting. You know, we probably can't define every situation. What I don't want this discussion to lead into, to give the impression that our teacher population, adults, not just teachers, adults in CPS, what, 40,000 employees in CPS, are predatory towards students, because it's not true. We have bad situations that some we've handled well, some we haven't handled as well as we should, and that's what we want to focus on and make sure we have the right count of reporting. But, you know, you can take this to, it quickly becomes a situation, and Mark's comment really stimulated more thoughts in my mind. In the course of the ordinary things that teachers are doing to actively improve and help develop students, you can get situations that under this broader definition of grooming could create comments.
I'm going to let-
Yeah, I was going to chime in on that. Last year, I think we sent out guidance, and Doug or Joe can correct me, but we sent out guidance just as a reminder about interactions with students, and it's most certainly appropriate at times for a one-on-one conversation between a student and a teacher, but those should not be regular. So what Matt was pointing out in the policy is that when we see a pattern of this, if it's always the same student with the, you know, there are things, we've all worked in schools, we know what it looks like when it's not right. I also think it's important to remember that, as I stated earlier, this is pervasive throughout our culture in America, and it's allowed to persist because people that are predators know how to make things look normal. So I would rather err on the side of reporting and being hyper-vigilant to change the culture than to be extra cautious around it. And as Matt pointed out earlier, the worst thing that could happen is something gets reported, it gets looked into, and it's unsubstantiated. That's much better than things not happening and giving, not only giving, not only the student who may be a victim, but other students who observe these behaviors, who comment on them regularly, the impression that it's okay. We have a lot of work to do in order to change the culture, and I believe that it may be necessary to go to the other extreme of the continuum in order to get to the right place. That's just, that's the posture that I have as the leader of this district, and that's the posture we're taking with the policies that we're presenting before the board today.
And Dr. Jackson, I would just add for the board as well that that's where the training will also come into play also, you know, so that employees receive the necessary training to be able to identify, you know, those signs that are not just common, you know, interactions between an employee, a teacher, an educator, and a student. So the training will actually also address that so that people can have, make a difference in determining whether or not it's a structured student-teacher tutoring session, or, you know, there's a flag or indicator there that suggests that it's grooming.
One other, you go ahead, Mark.
Chief McDade, when will the, what month will the retraining begin, and what month do you expect that you'll have covered in this first annual circuit, 100% of those you want to retrain?
So we're starting this, I mean, as the teachers begin to come back at the end of August, we're launching, you know, massive training to ensure that all employees are covered for the start of the school year, and we recognize that due to the sheer scale of the district, that those may not all be able to be, you know, in person. We're going to take advantage of our technological resources as well through webinars, et cetera, but our principals will be receiving training. We have our legal conference coming up, so there'll be multiple opportunities to ensure that our principals are equipped. So when they start the, launch the school year with teachers for their staff in-service, that will be a requirement on the agenda for every single school staff. So the plan is to have individuals trained so that when we start the school year and students come back, everyone is fully aware of these policies, these requirements, and the expectations to keep our students safe.
So, okay, so you're saying that-
End of August.
End of August, everyone will have been retrained?
Yes. And typically, every year, we do mandatory training, but it will be enhanced. So this isn't something, you know, as far as the training is concerned, this isn't something that we feel is, that cannot happen because we do the training every year anyway, but we are enhancing the training opportunities for staff to make sure that we cover all of the changes in the policy.
Is this training, as I understand it, is focused beyond just teachers? I'm talking about the 40,000 employees, and in fact, the sexual abuse cases in whatever form it takes, I'm not sure what percentage of that is actually teachers versus other people that are employed in the system. So I want to make sure that the training is actually-
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. One other, I also believe that part of our challenge, one of our challenges, is clarity on what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, just rules. For example, is there ever a reason why an adult would have in their car a nun, a student that's not a relative? Do we ever, do we allow that?
There's a policy where, that talks about students traveling with employees and their rules around insurance requirements, parent permission, and things like that. I'm happy to get you-
And principal's permission.
And principal permission. So there are a lot of safeguards in place in order to do that, and we're happy to get the exact language around that. I can have the-
Yeah, it's a board policy that no student may travel with a teacher in their car or a staff member in their car without parental permission, signed consent, without meeting certain insurance requirements, and also having the- without meeting certain insurance requirements, and also having the principal's permission. All three things must exist for that to happen appropriately.
Yeah, I actually know the policy. My question was, how well is it understood? And of course, are we rigorously adhering to it?
I think the guidelines for maintaining boundaries absolutely needs to get more training.
And we do have a plan to revisit all of our policies continuously throughout the year with school administration to make sure that we revisit and make sure that all principals are aware of our policies, especially when they're updated. So, that's one of the policies that can be revisited, not only during the legal conference, but will continue to come back to many of our policies that even some of those that have been revised, that we need to resurface with school administration.
Okay.
I just want to say that, from my knowledge, in most cases, that back in the day or in the past was used mainly for insurance purposes. We didn't have it as much attention or knowledge of the sexual abuse, so it was mainly used to protect the child in case of an accident or the teacher. I also want to commend you on the training that you will be doing because I think also important in this training, as I sat here and when we first read about some of these things, my heart went out to the kids and the families. My heart is also going out to the great teachers who are gonna pull back now because they don't want to tutor or help a child. The principals that might want to help a child who's not doing well. So, I'm just hoping that this training does not become to the extent that because they're a minority, even though it looks like a majority in the paper, of people who are doing this, that many of our kids are gonna lose out on the connection that they would have with their teachers and principals. I don't know where this comes in, but this is a concern of mine.
Yeah. Yeah, the same trust that makes for a good educational experience can also destroy a child. And that, that's the, it's not just a minority, it's a tiny, tiny, tiny minority. And, but we have to be vigilant about it, and I think as Dr. Jackson stated, if it takes going in the other direction and over-correcting in order to prevent, you know, to prevent it, then that's what we'll do, and we'll find the right balance over time.
Yeah, we need to be clear, though. I think Dr. Jackson, I'm only reiterating what she's already said. We are going to the other, the pendulum is shifting, going the other way. And we're gonna continue doing that until we believe that we are providing every protection possible. I'm sure over time, there may be some... We'll learn how to strike the right balances, but I think the concern that Dr. Heinz is expressing is a real concern, and yet, until we feel that the situation has been addressed in the broadest possible way and that students are protected, it will force us to go to the extreme. But I share her, Dr. Heinz's comment. This is not, notwithstanding how things are said or what people read, it's not an indictment on, certainly not on our teaching population, which I believe frankly is extraordinary, and all the things that were reported today by Chief McDade. The teaching component of CPS is doing well, and that should not be lost in this terrible situation we find ourselves in that has to be addressed, and maybe even in an extreme fashion. Okay, we need to let you finish.
Some of this will go quickly. The policy, both the current and amended policy, require employees to cooperate with DCFS or law enforcement agencies, as well as CPS's own investigations, which would certainly extend to the Office of Inspector General, which separate board policies already require cooperation with. There's no amendments to that language or those requirements. Our current policy...
I've been interrupting you again, for the record, because of the announcement on the Title I organization, Title IX organization. We have a new role, very, very extensive, expansive role for the IG, and then we have this Title IX protection, and they're different. They don't overlap, and the responsibilities are quite different. I shouldn't say everything overlapped at some point, but the roles are very different. Would you just quickly, just so there's no ambiguity of what...
Sure. So, the Office of the Inspector General, and of course, we are still working with him on the transition, and so, you know, this will be in broad strokes, is, is, the role is to investigate any allegation of sexual abuse or harassment by an adult of a CPS student. The response to even the adult-on-student incidents needs to be much broader than that, inclusive of supporting students, providing counseling or advocates, as well as ensuring that the proper communication protocols are followed, a host of other, of a whole range of actions on the part of the district. So, even in an example of adult-to-student abuse or an allegation of abuse, that would be the separation of, or distinction between the different roles. And then, the student protection in Title IX office would also be kind of responsible for the whole suite of those responses in student-on-student abuse cases.
Thank you.
The proposed amendment here in terms of our internal response codifies into policy what our practice already is, which is to immediately remove an adult from contact with students when an allegation of sexual abuse is made. So, we are putting that into the policy, but it is already in place in practice. The current policy also outlines a series of penalties for failure to comply with mandated reporting or interfering in any mandated reporting. That language is not changing. And there is a reminder in the current policy that failure to report abuse or neglect on the first instance for school employee is a Class A misdemeanor, and for second violations or beyond, it would be considered a Class IV felony under Illinois law. And lastly, the policy ends with a new section on delegation, which would delegate the authority from the board to the CEO or designee to create any guidelines necessary to implement this policy and enforce it.
Board members, any other questions?
We just have a quick summary. We know we covered quite a bit in this, that the policy is even a little bit more extensive than what we were able to share here today. So, I wanted to just highlight a few key proposed amendments that we think will make a huge difference in shoring up and tightening our systems and supports to ensure students are safe. The first one being the defining grooming, and to your point, President Clark, earlier, that some people may not be familiar with that term and what it really means. So, we want to make sure that that definition is clear, and the training around grooming is there, and it is seen as a form of sexual abuse that also requires mandatory reporting to DCFS. The second key proposed amendment requires mandated reporters to notify their principal. In the prior policy, it was recommended but not required, and we want to take away the ambiguity and discretion to make sure that everyone knows their roles and responsibilities as a mandated reporter, and ensuring that our building principals know what is happening in the building at all times so that they can take the appropriate course of action to protect all students in the building. The third one requiring employees to report any grooming or inappropriate intimate behaviors to the principal as well, as soon as possible, and requires the principal then to document the reporter's information. And then finally, requiring the annual retraining of all employees on mandated reporting obligations under the law and CPS policy. As a former principal and even as a teacher, you know, I strongly believe that the language here proposed in this policy removes any ambiguity, and it really makes sure that all individuals in the school clearly understand their roles and responsibilities in keeping students safe, and it also enforces a higher level of accountability for everyone that is responsible for, that we entrust our students to every day.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to welcome Arnie Rivera, our Chief Operating Officer, who will provide a facilities update and the current status of the Blitz inspections.
Good morning, President Clark, members of the board. Here to provide you with a quick update on facilities, as well as provide you with an overview of the proposal that's being set forth for your consideration at today's meeting. So, as you know, in 2014, the district began to shift the management of facilities in a disaggregated nature in a way that led to the different components and different responsibilities being managed by different entities. Over the last few years, in an effort to rectify some of the challenges that we saw with that model, we've started to transition schools into a model called Integrated Facilities Management, or IFM for short, which is a way to consolidate all the responsibilities, custodial, engineering, maintenance, pest control, under one point of contact. To date, we have over 300 schools on this model. We have 125 that are transitioning this summer, July 1st, and the rest that will transition by the start of the school year. What we've seen in regards to metrics are markedly higher principal satisfaction rates for schools that are IFM, increased health inspection results. You know, that can be attributed to the fact that under the previous model, you had one facility manager for 20 schools, and the IFM model allows for the management of one school to five. One of the things that this model will also allow us to do, as I've stated in the past, is as we restructure the team and enhance our systems, actually have the ability to manage the information and data in analogous ways with the vendors. As it relates to the Blitz inspections, as you recall, we blitzed around 125 schools between December and February, of which 30 did not pass, or 30 passed and 90 did not. As you know, we have since blitzed every school. We committed to blitzing every school before the end of the school year. We've done that. I know a lot of folks have been asking for that list. One of the mistakes that we made in February was releasing the information publicly without making sure that every school community had been properly communicated with. I did not want to redo that mistake, so ultimately, we've been working furiously to not only complete the inspections, but get the principals sign off and make sure that the appropriate communication has been sent to every school community regarding those results. We will be releasing the final list of every school later this week. What we saw in these Blitz inspections, the second time around, post the 125, is those schools that were on the IFM model, you know, were passing at a 20% higher clip than those in the non-IFM, between the 76% range versus the 56% range. You know, and we also saw in these inspections that, you know, routine and preventive maintenance rates were much higher for those IFM schools. As I've also stated before publicly, you know, while I do believe the model is a better structure for us in and of itself, it does not resolve all the issues that we're facing. And I think the number of steps that we've taken, you know, have been talked about publicly, but I do, you know, want to kind of reinforce them. You know, one, a few months ago, we did commit to adding an additional 200 custodial employees this summer, of which 100 will remain, at least 100 will remain full-time as we head into the next school year. We've also restructured our team to make sure that we have the right individuals, the right structure in place, and the right number of individuals to effectively not just manage the vendors, but I think equally, if not more importantly, work in partnership with our principals. And some of the things that we've noted is there's gonna be monthly inspections, but also monthly meetings with the principals so that we not only have an understanding of the partnership with the vendor, but also have a clear understanding of what the clear expectations and priorities of every principal in this district. And, you know, another thing that we've also implemented that will actually take place later this week is monthly meetings with every vendor, you know. At the end of the day, we've been doing, we've been receiving monthly reports, but one of the things that I've instituted is making sure that we meet with every vendor on a monthly basis, figure out what's working well, what's not, and what corrective action we need to take to resolve any issues moving forward. The proposal we are asking you to consider today incorporates one modification from the proposal that appeared on the board agenda. Our initial proposal involved awarding three zones to Sodexo and one zone to a new vendor. Since we last spoke, some information was brought to my attention that raised some serious concerns and has led me to reconsider awarding the zone to that vendor at this time. In light of these concerns, we are no longer proposing to award Zone 9 this month. We instead intend to bring a proposal for your consideration in July. That concludes my report.
Board members?
The goal is to have all schools on IFM for the new school year. Any, anything compromising that goal?
Assuming that today's recommendation is approved, 96 additional schools will transition by August 31st, leaving 34 schools in Zone 9. And we feel confident that, working with the schools, and ultimately, if we get approval next month, that we can ensure a smooth transition before September 1st.
Thank you, Arnie. This is not a question, it's just a comment and an observation. When did you take over having this directly report to you?
February 26.
It's one of the first things you did in your new assignment. Everything that I see, and I think board members would all concur, says to us that your focus on this is making a difference. Just continue to do so.
I appreciate that, President Clark.
Let me just add one focus, and then the other thing is tell us the bad news because I'm pretty, it's pretty clear to me that the bad news wasn't shared like you are today.
Absolutely.
Probably both privately, and then when you get in front of cameras here, you tell us the same story, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to welcome our Chief Officer of College and Career Success, Alan Mather, as well as our Chief Officer of Teaching and Learning, Anna Alvarado. We have several presentations today, as well as a policy change that we would like to highlight. Starting with Chief Mather, who will share details on the expansion of competency-based learning pilot that's designed to provide students with a customized learning and evaluation structure that emphasizes mastery of skills as opposed to time in the classroom. They will also highlight a proposed amendment to the high school promotion policy that will be better aligned to a student's mastery of core academic skills. So, we'll begin with competency-based learning. Alan?
Thank you so much. Well, board members, Dr. Jackson, Anya? This is, I've been in the district 33 years, and I tell people this is about as excited as I've been about anything. This move to competency-based learning. And we went from a state that had kind of no guidelines around competency-based learning to have a pilot that allows for some of the most progressive legislation we've seen in the country. In this legislation, the Post-Secretary Workforce Readiness Act, there are four key elements. We've been working very diligently on two of them, this transitional, these transitional courses so that students don't have to get into developmental education classes when they go to a community college. But this pilot for competency-based high school requirements is kind of a brand-new world for us. In this, the state has called out three primary elements, key elements. One is that students move when they demonstrate mastery. We talk about this, this could take two weeks, this could take two months, this could take two years. We have been guided by the Carnegie Unit, 120 hours that students have to sit in a class to earn a credit. One of our lines is often, if you're worried about seat time, you're focusing on the wrong end of the child. So, this is where time and attendance are not necessarily factors. It's the demonstration of mastery of those skills. There are multiple ways to demonstrate that mastery, not just one way, not just a paper-and-pencil test, but it should happen through application. And there are lots of ways that students can transition. We send schedulers some time into apoplexy when we think that a student might be leaving a class after two months and moving into another class, but it doesn't have to happen that way. They can progress on skills in another way. Another key part is that adaptive competencies, social and emotional skills, non-cognitive skills, are measured separately from academic. Right now, when we talk about what does a grade mean, oftentimes, a grade means, yes, you took your test and did appropriately, but also that your behavior was appropriate in class, that you turned in things on time, that you were compliant, and this separates that. It's not that those things are not important, they are so important, we're measuring them separately. separately. Those social and emotional skills are measured separately from the academic skills. Our state is one of the few states that has statewide social and emotional learning standards, and we are using these as our guideposts for what those noncognitive or SEL skills should look like. And yes, they need to show up on a transcript and on report cards and be called out separately. The third key component is that out-of-school learning has to be captured for in-school credit. This is a recognition that learning does not happen between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM. Students learn in different ways at different times. So we're partnering with the Chicago City of Learning, which is a platform we've already used quite a bit for computer science, where a teacher could say, here are the skills necessary in geometry. And wherever a student is, where they've demonstrated application, through application that they understand that skill, they could take a video, they could take a picture, they can capture this, upload it, tie it to that skill, so that the teacher can review the application that they have done. This really gets us, as a district, to focus on application. All of us who have been teachers have had students say, why do I need to learn this? Through application, they know why they need to learn it and how it can be applied. So you know, policy is written so that there are different rules from municipalities over 500,000 and municipalities under 500,000. For us, we are able to start with six schools the first year and add an additional six, we're adding an additional five this next year. Juan Carlos, where are you?
Thank you.
Juan Carlos O'Conne, the principal of Juarez, is here. Many of our principals are at a state conference around competency-based, but Juan Carlos has been a real leader in this work across the city, and he's going to be one of the pilot schools that's going to go whole school if this is approved for competency-based learning in the 18, 19 school year. We have an interesting mix of neighborhood schools, selective enrollment schools, Southside Occupational, which is a school for special needs students aged 18 to 22, York Alternative School, which is a school for incarcerated youth 18 and over, and then Phoenix Military Academy. So it's a diversity of school types that are going to be implementing this. Part of what this means is that a transcript has to look different, and our communication with higher ed is important. So I have three letters here from MIT, from Harvard, and from Dartmouth about how they are willing to accept proficiency-based or competency-based transcripts, that they see that there are multiple ways to measure. There are already schools across the country that are doing things differently. There are private schools in Chicago that offer narratives and not grades, so there are different ways for higher ed to look at these transcripts. Finally, we're going to finish with my favorite quote about this. Age is not a proxy for stage, time is not a proxy for progress, completion is not a proxy for competence, and access is not a proxy for equity. This changes the narrative of what school is.
Whose quote is that?
That is from Spark Education. I don't know the name of the person, I've seen it on Spark's website, and I just love it.
It's excellent.
It is, it is.
Questions, board members?
Just one question, Alan. Parents, how are parents going to be prepared for this?
So there are a few schools that have been implementing this without the progression piece. And you know, one of the key tenets also is that students have multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery. And so when I was principal, for example, we went to this model, and yes, there was some apoplexy at the beginning, saying, oh my gosh, what does this mean? But when parents learned that their students just didn't have one opportunity, and if they did not do well, that was it, that they had multiple opportunities to demonstrate that they understood something, parents got incredibly behind this. And where we've seen this implemented at Juarez, at Lindblum, we have seen graduation rates grow up, we have seen scholarship dollars offered increase, and we think this is really the path forward. So we are engaging parents at every school. It's going to look different at different schools, that's part of the nature of a pilot, but parents have to be a part of the process.
You know, all of the four lines in the quote are profound. One is a little strange to me, but it's still a great quote. The completion is not a proxy for competence, I think is huge in the educational sense, because while you have to focus on completion rates, and everybody brags about that, and they should, because you want kids to finish, and finish in a timely fashion, and go on. But at the end of the day, it's the ability to be successful, it's the ability that you've actually learned something, and not that you walked across the stage with a diploma, but you don't know much. So I'd love that you included this quote in that part about competency, because that gets you a job, that gets you hired, that gives you an opportunity to have a successful life. Completion is essential, but competency is what makes your life work.
Absolutely right.
You can quote that, too.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Chief Officer Anna Alvarado will now cover the high school promotion policy amendment.
Good morning, distinguished board members. This is a perfect segue, actually.
Did you say distinguished?
Distinguished. You are distinguished. Excellent, distinguished.
You can stay as long as you like.
This is actually a perfect segue from Alan's presentation, revisiting some aspects of our high school promotion policy, just the fact that we actually have not revisited it since 2004. Our policies Chief McDade actually spoke about in general, we are revisiting both academic operational policy across the district. First of all, for relevance, timeliness, and also making sure that our policies are not barriers to our students and communities' success. So the first policy that I'd like to revisit will be on attendance. The amendment that we would like to propose to be removed and replace has to do with the language around requiring students to fail courses in which they have 20% or more unexcused absences. In our 2004 policy, it says, in order for a student in high school to be promoted or earn the credit, they have to meet two criteria. First is they cannot have more than 20% truancy or unexcused absences, and the second is that they have to complete all the assignments and course requirement. You've heard Alan talked about competency-based performance. We are saying that there may be students, due to unforeseen reasons, who have been tardy for, so 20% translates to about 36 days, but still are able to demonstrate mastery of their content, a level of proficiency and skill, and meet the requirements of the course, including the standards of the course, that they be able to earn the credit for that course. Another rationale is grades received and credits earned must be based on what the student is able to demonstrate in that coursework and in that subject. And most of all, we know that, we all agree that attendance is important, is important lever for student performance, but we would like to separate dealing with attendance and not, you know, put it all together in a student who's experienced severe chronic truancy, but still able to meet the criteria and the performance measures for that course. So that is what's on the table that is currently being amended in the policy.
Can I ask a question just before we move on?
Yes, please.
What is our responsibility, then, to help young students understand that being present is part of it, because we know in the workforce, the same thing happens?
Correct.
I'm glad, by the way, you took failure out, because they're not there if they prove that they're competent. But then how do we teach the other skill?
Right. This also happened in elementary school a while back. Part of the policy was a student will not, you know, be promoted if they, you know, have a certain number of tardiness or absences, and then obviously, you know, even if they have a passing grade, but if they're attendance, and I remember I was a principal when this policy was in place, we continue to encourage the importance of attendance. And again, we're not saying regardless whether you come to class or not, you're going to pass as long as you, but we do honor, I mean, based on like what Alan was talking about, there are certain students that who, due to circumstances, whether social, emotional, socioeconomic, family situations, that are not able to be in school, we would like to be able to offer supports in that respect, you know, at the school level, additional external resources that could be provided to them.
And then, board member Farlong, I would like to just add, too, as a district, we have a really strong support system around attendance. We value attendance, we're pushing attendance throughout our district. Alan's shop has a whole office dedicated to that, as well as the Office of Network Support has someone dedicated towards supporting schools around attendance. Attendance remains in our school quality rating policy. What we're saying here is that truancy is a separate issue, and that we are not using our actual promotion policy as a truancy strategy. We have a separate strategy for truancy. So, and I also want to add that this is not the majority of our students, we have some students, especially more vulnerable students, students that may be in temporary living situations or have experienced adverse childhood experiences that impact their ability to be able to come to school, requires a much more sensitive approach and a more targeted approach, and we know that the research shows that retaining students as a whole is counterproductive towards both academic, social, and emotional success for students. So we are not removing, or as a district, messaging anything less than attendance is incredibly important towards students being successful academically. Instead, what we're saying here is that we want to make sure we have a targeted and supportive strategy for those students who may be showing chronic truancy, and support them in other ways, rather than having a punitive policy across the board that blankets all students, when technically, we have students that need additional supports that are specifically germane to truancy issues.
You know, I'm glad Mark asked for, made the comedy dead, because I was thinking that while you were speaking. I like the idea that students who demonstrate competency can be promoted, can pass, go to the next grade period. But Mark actually does point out another, you know, real-life situation, you know, the whole process of education, and since we have kids for 12 years, you're positioning them for the rest of their lives, one of the things that I saw that some young people struggle with is literally getting to work every day. Just the habit had not been formed. And there, where you may be otherwise confident, if you're not there and the employer doesn't see you, they don't keep you. And so it's another issue that needs to be addressed separately, and I'm glad to hear that they're still focused on that, but you're not holding back people who otherwise are demonstrating their capability.
Correct. The second proposed amendment has to do with students who transfer to CPS and they come from other countries, let's say in places that where they're already fluent and proficient in a language other than English. We would like for them to be able to get credit after review of their transcript, be able to receive credit for classes that have been taken in a language other than English. The rationale behind this is it will allow that student to explore other academic subjects, not have to repeat that language. So you know, in high school, part of the graduation requirement is they take two years of world language, and in this situation, that student who is already fluent in a language other than English will have other options, including open to being able to encourse for IB and AP classes.
And then for the board members, I want to just do a quick reminder of our prior board meeting, where we had two young ladies come from, I think one was Northside College Prep and another high school, and they shared with the board the frustration of being a student who is learning English as a second language, and they're already fluent in their native language, to then pick up another language, just brought about so many challenges and frustration, that their voices caused us to go back and evaluate our policy and strengthen the language in our policy to make sure that we are taking into consideration our students who may be immigrants that have transferred into CPS, both at the elementary level as well as the high school level, to ensure that we're not creating additional barriers for them.
Correct. And these opens more opportunity for our students to earn college credits, see love by literacy at a more faster pace, because they have mastered a language other than English. And the third proposed amendment has to do with our state law.
I'm sorry, we're interrupting you so much. Did I just hear that we're doing this policy change because students who were already fluent in a second language brought to our attention? I know I heard this at a board meeting some months ago. I mean, I'm very pleased to hear, and students should be aware that bringing issues to us that we otherwise maybe haven't looked at closely, that we hear them and actively address it. So is this really the result of students bringing this to our attention?
Firming up, that prompted us to go back and look at the language, and we saw some of the ambiguity in the language, where there was some confusion, that probably even for schools, administrators and teachers enforcing this. So yes, I would say that the young ladies that came before us really, you know, caused us to go back and evaluate how the language was written in the policy, and we made the appropriate changes, because they brought forward a concern that was valid, and we knew we needed to shore up the language in the policy.
Have we closed the loop and actually shared this with them, that they were actually influential?
You know, I think we could do a better job. Ernesto did reach out to the students, but we will double back and make sure that they're aware that this policy is coming before the board today, and that they have contributed to something that will impact the entire district in a positive way, particularly our immigrant students.
Yes, yeah. It's good to know that our students really do have a voice and, you know, allow us to revisit our policies, that, you know, more relevant to them.
It's even more important that they know that we did it.
Absolutely. And the third proposed amendment has to do with adding language to reflect the current CPS service learning requirements. This is already taken into action this year. Previously, we have 10th graders have to perform 20 hours of service learning. Our current graduation policy has to do with adding language to reflect CPS service learning, which means as a 10th grader, you have two opportunities to do a service learning. One could be through your civics and AP government, and the other one, you choose in any of your subjects. And then the other proposal also has to do with language that requires students to take state-mandated college ready determination exam. We are already currently doing this, our 11th grader take the SAT, but we want to just be able to firm it up and make sure that it's reflected in our high school promotion policy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief Alvarado. I would like to invite Alan Mather back to share and walk us through a presentation on Community Schools Initiative. This has been a collaborative partnership between CPS and CTU to create a mutually supportive environment where classroom and social support services work together to enhance student achievement, and Alan will take us through the presentation on the Community Schools Initiative.
Thank you. Hello again. It's such a treat to be up here and seek your support around two really wonderful things today, so I just want to say how grateful I am for that. So as Chief McDade said, this has been a collaboration between the Chicago Public Schools and Chicago's Teachers Union. It was written up as part of the last contract, where we would create a new community schools program, which we have named Sustainable Community Schools. While we already have 46 district-managed community schools programs, they are supported at about $135,000 per school, this raises the bar up to $10 million to support 20 sustainable community schools. In this enhanced model, lead partner agencies and schools collaborate to ensure that children and members of the community and their families receive support services identified through a needs assessment at each school. Those services may be different at each school. These are both through academic and non-academic programming. Sustainable Community Schools seeks to build relationships between and among those in the school and those in the community that serve them. So this new Sustainable Community Schools model took 18 months of collaboration, and I have to do a call-out again, of Molly Burke, the Director of Student Support and Engagement here at CPS, and Jen Johnson, the Education Issues Manager at the Chicago Teachers Union. They have really led this work with large teams coming together at the CTU and here at CPS to build out what this was to be. This truly is a labor of love, and it's built around seven shared guiding principles. Racial justice and equity, transparency and trusting relationships. Racial justice and equity, transparency and trusting relationships, self-determination and governance, shared leadership and collaboration, reflective learning culture, a whole child approach to education, and building from community strengths and community wisdom. This was 20 people together, 10 from CPS, 10 from CTU, coming together and building something that we believe will have a true impact on student learning. So, going forward, if all of this passes, CPS and CTU will work together to select the 20 schools together that will take part in the Sustainable Community Schools. The first part, and this is a little bit different than how we do it now, is that the lead partner agencies will make proposals to the schools, then the schools will select a lead partner agency, and they submit a joint application. Together, CPS and CTU will work together to select those final 20 schools. The project will kick off with a summer institute in August and be fully implementational in October.
Board members' questions?
Well, I don't have a question about this, but I have a question for Alan. So, after a three decade career, I met you at Lynn Bloom, you turned nothing into a powerhouse school, and then you worked under Dr. Jackson's team. What are you going to do in retirement? Are you going to give up all this stuff?
About a month from now, I'll be able to tell you what I'm doing next. Can't tell you yet, but, yeah, it's still a secret. But yes, I am going to still be serving children. And this three decades here in CPS has been wonderful. I mean, I cannot tell you what it was like walking into Farragut in 1986, just, and then the changes that have happened in the district, the growth that has happened in the district. This is a very different place than it was in 1986, and a very different place for the better.
Thank you, Alan. Before you, you leave, you, you kept emphasizing that this process is a collaboration between CPS and CTU. You named two individuals. Would you have those people stand, the two stand, so we can see?
Holly and Jen.
I, I think that the fact that the collaboration exists, period, and has worked well, says a lot, and hopefully there'll be a lot more of it, just like we learned from our students and made a policy change as a result of that, working with the union ought to be generally beneficial. So, thank you. And I share, I share Mark's comments. I'm very familiar with your background and your service to this institution, and you're one of the reasons there's better. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, and I just want to remind you that you're still here with us. So, I mean, I know you announced your retirement, but it's not over yet. We still need you.
I am fully in, Montani, don't worry. 100%.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you, Alan. This concludes my remarks for today.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from Board members? Okay, having none, I'll make a brief announcement. As always, I would encourage people to use our website, cpsboe.org, as a way to communicate with the board in between board meetings, also because it's just simply going to be more and more information accessible or available on our website, consistent with comments made earlier by, by our CEO, Dr. Jackson. So, I encourage people to make use of that, of that website. With that, Madam Secretary, please share the details for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, July 25, 2018, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 10:30 a.m. on Monday, July 23, 2018, and will close on Tuesday, July 24, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. or, or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. And if anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Okay, then let's proceed with our public participation section. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with our board office staff member, Eric. He will assist and line you up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience, and I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium, and therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the railing as possible, this will still allow for people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. And, Mr. President, with that, we will begin by calling one elected official who is with us here today. He is the Chief of Staff from Local 73, Jeffrey Howard, and then we will proceed with the speaker's list.
Can we wait one second for our group to come in?
They're coming in now.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, fellow board members. My name is Jeffrey Howard, and I am Chief of Staff of SEIU Local 73, bringing you greetings from our leaders, Diane Palmer and Elisa O'Medina, our 30,000 members statewide, and the over 7,000 members who work and support for the Chicago Public School District. We're here today to talk about an issue in wake of the terrible Supreme Court decision, Janus decision that was just handed down, seeking to strip the power from union workers. But we won't be silenced. Today, members of Local 73, special education classroom assistants, school security officers, bus aides, custodians, and parent workers are here to deliver just expectations for our brothers and sisters in the Chicago Public Schools. We offer support to thousands of CPS students and their parents every day. We are proud to ensure a safe and nurturing environment where every child in every neighborhood may prepare for success. Our members report to work each day so that children's, so that the children of our communities receive a quality education and have the support they need to lead happy, safe, and productive lives. Despite this hard work, Chicago Public Schools continues to deprioritize us by utilizing an arbitrary evaluation system to justify terminating and laying off the very people who ensure that our children receive a quality education. Many of them are most vulnerable students. This system, which currently has no formalized process for development and success of its workers, leaves the schools destabilized and short-staffed. It hurts our communities. Today, we seek to change that. We demand to have an evaluation system in process based on documented and scheduled formal observations with pre and post conference meetings between evaluator and the worker, evaluation that provide remediation with clear development plans and coaching before workers negatively affected and by, negatively affected by the evaluation process. We also believe that it is wrong that negative evaluations in one school year have such high stakes and negative impacts on the long-term careers of our members, as many lose years of seniority from one subpar evaluation. Evaluation should be based on objective and defined criteria specific to the position, and an evaluation process that has clear direction on who the individual supervisor is, all of the points are clearly laid out in the petition, and we look forward to starting the process necessary to do the right thing for workers and the families we serve. We all win when dignity and respect are brought back to the work SEIU members do daily. As such, we are here with a signed petition from over 1,500 members of the Chicago Public School District, asking that the school board immediately partner with SEIU Local 73 to begin the process of overhauling the current evaluation system. Sincerely, Jeffrey Howard, Chief of Staff, SEIU Local 73. We'd like to present our petition to Dr. Jackson.
It's my understanding that there are current negotiations underway. Is that correct?
We've had a session, yes.
Okay. As long as people are talking, I'm optimistic.
We, we are optimistic as well, but we want to ensure that our members have an evaluation process because our folks are being laid off with no real justification, no real observation. These are the folks that take care of these students, many of our special needs babies. We also have crossing guards that make sure these children get to school, security officers, animal control officers to make sure that dogs and wild animals aren't running around for our children. So, we'd like our workers to be respected. It is very important that they have a fair process that outlines to them what they need to correct. We all want our students to have the best available teachers and support staff, but our support staff needs to be supported too, and they need clear objectives as to what they're lacking in, if they are lacking in anything, and not based on friendship or I don't like necessarily the way you do things, and we really appreciate the board to look into that for us.
Well, I respect the fact that you came with very clear declaration of the things that are important to you, and that you brought a cross-section and a representation of the people who provide frankly a very, very valuable service to CPS, and I, I think that you're talking, and I think that's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. President, before I begin with the speaker's list, we do have Jesse Sharkey in the audience with us, CTU Vice President. He would like to address the board, please.
I think Labor Millet is catching around here. I like it. Madam CEO, Chief Counselor, Mr. Moriarty, members of the board. I'm Jesse Sharkey, I'm the Vice President, CTU. I have a few concerns I wanted to talk to you about today. First of all, just on behalf of Karen Lewis, who did submit her papers for retirement from the board, you know, I do, I, I speak to her regularly. Just the other day, she does appreciate your congratulations. What she really wants, of course, is clear communication, respect, and a fair contract for us as well. So, hopefully that comes along with the congratulations card. I should say, just for the record, that Karen has, you know, has retired from the board. There's going to be a process for the CTU. We don't have a leader who is as influential and as important and frankly revered as Karen and just say, okay, see you later. You know, that we, there's some events that she's going to be doing this summer, and we're going to be looking to have a, you know, a formal transition as we go into this fall, and we're talking to our own members about that. But I want to be clear that I'm speaking to is the Vice President of the CTU. Karen maintains her post. She is obviously intending to retire, but there's going to be, there's going to be a process around that. I want to begin by sort of lifting up what you guys were talking about earlier about the Sustainable Community Schools. First of all, thank you to Molly Burke, Alan Mather, and Jen Johnson with the CTU. This has been a lot of work. This is something which came about as part of the 2015 through 2019 collective bargaining process. That's where the, sort of the idea for this was born. That's where the funding commitment for CPS went in. And frankly, the idea that this isn't actually being implemented into the last year of this contract has been a source of frustration for us. I do not want us to do all the work to implement this in the last year, only to see the funding pull just as we, as this thing becomes successful. So, I want to, I want to urge you to vote yes on the funding for it, but I, I know that we're having negotiations now, and we'd like to see this, we'd like to see this program be picked up in, in future contracts. I know it's something that we're going to be asking for. Look, this is only 20 schools. You know, we have to fund, fund, get the evidence-based funding model out of the state and continue to see this carried forward. So, that's the first thing. I want to say the work in this area stands somewhat in contrast to a couple of other concerns that I'm going to make. I try to be really like on point about time. The next thing I want to talk about though is going to take a little bit more time because I want to make it clear where the CTU stands on the issues around sexual abuse that have recently been reported in the Chicago Tribune and in other places. I have two kids myself in the Chicago Public Schools, and let's make it clear that, and it's an emotional issue for me. I want to make it clear though that teachers and our, the people who are part of the CTU go into school with a mission of serving, protecting children, and that's, that's what we see as our job. If you hurt kids, you don't, you don't belong in our profession. And so, I want to be on the record about that. However, it does not mean that anything goes, and when tutoring a student alone in your room, after school, for example, puts you under a cloud of suspicion, I, I think that we have to be, I think we have to be concerned about what that would mean for the work that we do as educators. And I understand that the, that there's, that we have to start believing students, and that we have to like, we, we have to re-win public trust in areas where it's been lost. And that being said, I understand when you say that there's a new series of policies which are clear, but like, the truth of the matter is that these things aren't necessarily clear from the point of view of a teacher. If, if we don't know what it means, how can we, what does it mean for a coach? What does it mean for someone who tutors students? That we now have a, a situation where we're requiring that people report, hey, I saw someone alone in a room with a student? That's kind of what, that's kind of what tutoring looked like. So, I, I'm going to ask that you guys be better at communicating and including us in this process, because the people who actually have to make this work are the frontline workers in schools. And I, I was not happy that there's, you've announced a new 20-person department, the Office of Student Protection, and I learned about that when a reporter showed it to me on the phone. And three weeks ago, we reached out and said, we want to be involved in this process, talk to us about having a task force to, to be able to get into the details, and so that some of our frontline workers, who are the ones who actually, as a practical matter, really hear the issues from students about student abuse, our social workers, for example, we want, we want to be involved in this process and have a conversation. And so, that when I hear you're creating a new office, and I hear about it from a reporter, come on, pick up the phone with us. It's not, that's not a good sign on, on this area. So, I, I, you know, I'm looking, there's staffing shortages, you know, our social workers again at the front lines. There's one social worker for every 1,200 students in CPS. Not, national standards on that are five, you know, that's five times over the national standards. Last thing I'll just say quickly, again, this is something that I picked up out of the board report. Well, Tanya and I had a phone call about it this morning, but it's not nearly robust enough. Just for the record, the union does not support the attendance policy change at this point. I was a high school teacher. I, I doubt that you're not trying to discipline students with our grade books. That's not the way that works. But frankly, we also have the ability to set a message about cutting, which is, which is an issue, and unless there's a policy in place about cutting, you know, I, then, then I think that like the, the idea of changing our attendance policy is problematic. So, I'm going to ask that you guys do a better job reaching out and keeping the communication going. I'm going to ask that you, that you work on this, on the task force that we ask for around keeping students safe from sexual abuse, because we've still got a lot of work to do in these areas.
Jesse, a number of things that you said, I think are, are easy to agree with. I'm troubled by the lack of communications and that can be dealt with, because that's something that I know Dr. Jackson is pushing hard, and certainly the board is. We don't operate in a vacuum, and things like that should be shared. So, I, I hear you.
But you know what I mean? Like, I, I thought Matt's Lions presentation on the, you know, if you see something, say something. It may be it's clear from a policy point of view, but it become, it's a lot less clear about what that means in terms of the practice of educators and what we have to do in order to make sure that we're not being removed from our classrooms for the crime of tutoring a student. You know, I, I need to get, we're going to need real clarity on those things in terms of the way the rubber meets the road and that stuff.
I agree.
Thanks.
President Clark, if I may, just, I think that first I do want to echo apologies around the lack of communication around some of the things that were mentioned today, but I also would be remiss if I didn't share, just quite frankly, my impression of being stunned at some of the remarks. I've been clear, despite my short tenure, that I accept full responsibility for moving forward and fixing this. I would expect that every single person, especially CTU, has a similar posture. This is not a CPS leadership, a CPS board issue alone, and I reject any notion that puts all of the onus simply on the district. I'm going to carry my load and more, but I would also say, if training is an issue, CTU offers a lot of training. I have not yet seen a training proposal to support your members that you could do without working with us. We also support- We also support training through funding from the district. So I will always accept those comments. I will always take them under consideration and incorporate them in decisions that we make. But what I will not do is allow CPS and my shoulders alone to be the only shoulders that bear the responsibility for fixing this issue. It's not going to change unless it's a collaborative effort. And I'm calling out to CTU and every other stakeholder that engages with students regularly to come to the table with proposals to support our children because that's what it's going to take in order to change the culture that exists in our district.
That's fine. Fine, and they've never suggested as much. They never suggested that like this is an issue that hasn't, you know. Frankly, if there's a situation going on in a school and it involves a teacher, it was probably one of our members. And I think that our organization has been pretty, you know, direct. That's not something that we find acceptable either. And that's what I meant when I said if you're hurting students, you don't belong in our profession. And so I want to be clear about that. But I also want to be clear that like, you know, this situation also occurs because there's political pressures on principals, for example, to keep their attendance up in an era where their school goes into financial decline if bad press gets out about it. You know, this is a situation where teachers are going to be expected to act with new kind of scrutiny about how we interact with students. And there's a bunch of guidelines there that are not yet clear. I literally have done meetings where people have said, does this mean, how do I tutor students? Should I be in a library with like, should we have tutoring hours? What does that mean? You know? And so unless we're involved in that process, it becomes problematic. And that's kind of, that's what I'm saying is that like, involve us, communicate, we got to have a high standard.
I think the key here is the word is communicate. But Dr. Jackson and the board fully supports her. Dr. Jackson has been very clear and things that are being rolled out for the first time in some cases do push the pedal in the other way. You heard comments and concerns on how this could in fact affect certain situations like tutoring. But at the end of the day, the expectation is that the union leadership will be 100% supportive of what we're doing to protect students. And I haven't heard you actually say anything to the contrary.
We're 100% committed to protecting students. We view that as our job and we're going to work together with this Board of Education to make sure that we get it right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. President, I will now begin with the speaker's list. And I'll start by calling the first speaker Jenny Biggs, Speaker Number One, followed by Speaker 57, Cassandra Creswell. And then we have the designated speakers from Decatur. Speaker Number 12, please, Sebastian Parker, and Speaker Number Five, Margarita Leonard.
My name is Jenny Biggs. I'm a CPS parent, Communications Director for Raise Your Hand. Last week, I attended the joint hearing on sexual abuse at CPS. It was revolting on so many levels, but one thing we learned is that the CPS General Council reports directly to the school board president. This means that President Clark and his predecessors were briefed on rampant reports of sexual abuse in our schools over time and did not act to ensure the situation was better managed and did not demand that procedures and policies were implemented beyond very basic and clearly insufficient mandated reporter trainings. From the hearing and the TRIB report, we also learned that CPS lawyers routinely questioned students without a parent or adult present, sometimes repeatedly. We learned this does not follow Illinois law because CPS should not be questioning victims, The CPS legal department handled over 400 cases of sexual abuse or assault incidents in the school setting over the last seven years. We want to know, how is it possible that the board never recognized that more needed to be done to ensure proper trainings at schools? And why did you not employ network staff to ensure compliance in this area? We know and knew that appointed boards have an inherent conflict in that you end up working to preserve and protect the image of the person who appointed you above and beyond all else. We do not know how much Frank Clark or David Vitale or those before shared with respective board members, but we do know that they knew and did nothing. Sure, some individual teachers and principals and staff are also complicit, but you hold the keys to district policymaking and you did not act, you did not do your jobs, you did not ensure schools were being trained, and you should step down and admit that you are part of a flawed system of school governance that has no checks and balances. Join us in Springfield to call for an elected school board. And as to the comment that it's inappropriate.
Ms. Biggs, can you please conclude?
I will. We call nonsense on that. The board president is a political appointment by the mayor. The same board that thinks it's okay for the CEO to do radio and TV ads for the mayor eight months before the election failed to do anything to put systems in place on this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Our next speaker, please, Cassandra Creswell.
Hi, I'm the co-director of Raise Your Hand Action. We're deeply concerned about yet another breach of CPS students' private personal data, the fifth known major exposure of CPS students' data in three years. We're especially worried in light of May's announcement that CPS will be partnering with the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, a for-profit organization that invests in ad tech companies and is owned by the CEO of Facebook, a company embroiled in an international scandal because of its cavalier treatment of customers' private data. On Friday, June 15th, the Office of Access and Enrollment sent out a mass email to parents which contained a link to publicly accessible file containing student and parent personally identifiable information, including student ID numbers. After CPS administrators were alerted to the mistake, an apology went out asking recipients to delete the file that was attached to the email. This was a complete misdiagnosis of what had happened. There was no attachment in the original email. There was a link to a file that was online and accessible with any web browser. Finally, five and a half hours after it was shared, the link to that page was disabled. To add to our concerns, based on email evidence and parent reports, an identical error was committed last spring as well. On March 10th, 2017, OAE used the software system Blackboard Connect to email out a link containing family's PII. We have many questions about both of these incidents. CPS is in the third year of a three-year, almost $1 million contract with Blackboard Connect, software that's directly integrated with CPS's own student information system. How could training and support for the use of this system be so inadequate? Why is the OAE telling parents they cannot get new student ID numbers issued for their child? Student ID numbers are frequently used for other purposes, including usernames and passwords for other applications containing educational records. The watchdog group Electronic Privacy Information Center considers student ID numbers sensitive data, as does the Illinois Administrative Code. This mistake is now public, but what other breaches or mishandling of data have parents and the public not been informed of? Who is accountable for not just the individual breaches, but the pattern of failures so far? Who will be in charge of creating systems to actually protect our children's information?
Thank you, Ms. Creswell. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Sebastian Parker and I am here to speak to you about the potential for expansion at Decatur Elementary, Classical Elementary School. My third-grade son recently transferred into Decatur. It's been a journey, but we have found the perfect fit both academically and socially for a boy who loves reading and math. These accelerated subjects couldn't fit him better. To help round out his education at Decatur, they also offer essential classes in Latin, Performing Arts, and PE. However, all of these are to be done in an inadequately sized building originally intended for kindergarten through second-grade space. Students are restricted to the classroom for most learning activities. Some of the Performing Arts classes take place in a very small library, which is not conducive to either performing in the space or children being able to use the library. As you know, unlike nearly all CPS elementary schools, Decatur does not offer seventh or eighth-grade levels. Each year, sixth graders have to find another new school that will be just as well-suited for them. I feel this is a tall order at an age when consistency in the social environment has a profound impact on how a child develops as a learner. My hope is for students at Decatur, both current and future, to be able to access what really should be in place now, a continuous kindergarten through eighth-grade education. Thank you so very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And our next speaker, Margarita Leonard.
Hi, my name is Margarita Leonard and I'm a parent of a rising sixth grader at Decatur Classical and a third grader at another CPS school. Both kids are doing great at their schools, which fit them. But like Sebastian and like many parents, sorry, and students who have spoken this school year and over previous school years, I'm here to advocate for an expansion for Decatur Classical to include seventh and eighth grade and a facility that meets our needs. As a school community, we are unified in our desire to expand and are so pleased to have a strong leader in Yolanda Luna, a talented staff, and an LSC who'd be poised to bring it to reality. That's why you hear so many similar stories from speakers with only details that change about what makes a school special for this student or for another family, or why this particular student would really love a gym, why that student hopes for a visual arts room, and why they'd all love the chance for two more years at Decatur before they head off to high school. As for my kid, he loves our dance class and really wishes he and his classmates had much more room to move because they are in the tiny library for that class. He also enjoys and really needs gym time to run and stretch. So during cold Chicago winters, which when they're necessarily kept inside, which I understand, he really feels it at the end of the day. We also hope that the expansion would allow more children to experience the special classical school community and learning environment. The 282 kids who are there today crammed into this tiny space still love it. Think of what more we could do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard, for your comments. Mr. President, we do have an alderman in our audience who joined us and he'd like to address the board. Alderman, Tony, please, from the 44th Ward.
We're going to write. Actually, Tony and I have a lot in common.
Sorry about that.
We both have neighboring wards. He's the first alderman, I'm the second. He has seven brothers and sisters, so do I. He's the sixth of eight kids, so am I. He has a twin brother who's straight, so do I. So we get confused a lot. But I'm here with Carolyn Lewis and she'll also speak at a later point. And this is regarding the Courtney Child Parents Center building on Magnolia. It's a vacant building. It is in terrible disrepair and I understand there was an assessment done that said it's not able to be repaired. It needs to be torn down. It was a building that was built as a temporary building with the knowledge that later on it'd be torn down. Now it is vacant. And I'm asking CPS, and you have a lot on your plate and I understand that, to really consider selling this building for a couple of reasons. One, it costs CPS quite a bit of money and Carolyn Lewis will later tell you what those costs are and you may already know. But it's also been a blight to the community as well. There's a lot of, some drug dealing and some gang activity in that area. So basically that I need to go back to city council because there's a meeting going on, but thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Alderman.
Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. And we'll proceed with the speaker's list. And we have the group from King College Prep. They have not identified designated speakers, Mr. President. And we'll start with Speaker Number Three, Jonathan Williams. Number Nine, Tanika Reed. Seventeen, Caleb Mitchell. Twenty-seven, Brian Mullins. Twenty-eight, Marshawn Donegan. Thirty-eight, Jazz Dunn. Thirty-nine, Titiana Reed. Forty-one, Jordan Dunn. Forty-eight, Jonathan Brooks. Fifty, Jasmine Brooks. And fifty-five, Jill Dunn. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you again. My name is Jonathan Williams. I am part of the newly-elected local school council for King College Prep. When I came to see you three months ago, it was long before the election, I had filed paperwork, but who knew it was how things were going to take place? Since that time, you know, my energy, my focus to join the local school council to fight for a chance to make King great was related to what I was seeing happening at King or what I saw was not happening at King. Since the time I was here last, what we've discovered is many members of that local school council did not have, did not complete state mandated training. Now, that's a problem across local school council. It's easy to kind of ignore it because it's a big problem. It's a problem we lived through because we could see the impact of them not having proper training. They were not evaluating our principal correctly. They were not involving parents or teachers or communities in the decision-making that was taking place. We felt it. And as a result, we pushed back. We organized, we ran. Every single person that was part of that local school council that attempted to run again, we defeated them. What that's left us with is we're about to take over a school where they have not extended the contract to the principal we wanted to keep. In fact, they've extended the contract to a principal who we think is poor for the school. We currently, and I'm sure some of the other folk here today can speak more to it, we currently are aware and we are aware that not only is this being investigated, that the principal at Robinson, who was offered the job the day before interviews, sent a bunch of boxes to King College Prep, gifts, band items, to the director of band who happened to be part of the interview group, which, there's two things that are happening with that. One, it's a conflict of interest for a local school council member who's about to interview someone. It's the one thing in those code of conduct that an LSC member can be expelled for that took place. And then two, we have a principal sending gifts to someone that's going to be evaluating her. We ask that you do not approve her contract today.
Mr. Williams, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Tanika Reed. Next then will be Caleb Mitchell.
Hi, I'm Caleb Mitchell. I'm a junior. I've been at King all three years. I love it. Like, I love my principal. I love my assistant principal. They've made King my home. And recently, I've felt like powerless to stop the LSC and their attempts to sabotage my school because that's what they want to do. They're not listening to students. I, me and other students here have, and other students who aren't here, have appealed and tried to go to the LSC and say, okay, can you include us in this process? We know you don't have to legally, but morally from a standpoint, we're asking, like, can you involve us in this process? Can you listen to what the students want? And we haven't been listened to. We've constantly, like, it's like every time we have an issue with them, like, they don't, it's just, they don't listen to us. We've protested, we've done a lot of things to like try to circumvent the process, but we're powerless to this point. Members of the LSC have called us a school full of thugs, a bunch of animals, and we feel like these people should not have the power to pick who governs us for the next four years. They shouldn't have that power because they clearly don't care about us. So I'm real, I really, really, really need you guys to like counsel that vote that they made to have the Robinson principal as our principal because she does not need to be there. She really doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. And the next speaker, please. Twenty-seven, Brian Mullins.
Hey, good morning. Actually, the exact same issues that they're having over at King, we're actually having these same issues over at Beasley Academic Center. All the way, sounds from the beginning all the way down to the very end of it. The local school council there did not give the public the opportunity to really be involved throughout the selection process. Meetings were not posted for certain meetings and different things like that. So we also have an open investigation with the Attorney General's Office as well. And as well, I brought a little bit over 250 signatures from petitions from our parents that are signed, they're saying the same exact thing about them not being involved with the process. Beyond that part of it, you know, I would just like to say that it's just time for a change in the Chicago public school system. We can't act like that these problems or concerns don't matter. And the same issues that are happening at Beasley are happening at King and maybe even more schools. But it's time for accountability and it's time for all our schools to mobilize and work together to help create that change we want to see. But we also understand that we cannot do this alone and we're going to need your help as we ask you guys to not only support our schools and our visions, but you consider our issues and concerns. As you may have to make some great decisions that will ultimately affect the future and progress of our schools. So in closing, I would just say, and I say it all the time, is just follow your heart. But I will ask that not just King, but King and Beasley, that you guys look into it a little bit more before you make a decision and you guys sign that contract. I feel that the candidate that was selected for Beasley in particular, I don't feel that the process was done right. So I don't feel that candidate should be even eligible to be a candidate. And King, same exact thing. I just don't feel that, you know, those candidates should be eligible. So I would just ask that you guys just look at it again and before making a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Twenty-eight, Marshawn Donegan.
Good afternoon, everyone. According to the CPS vision on your website, you stated that students learn best when they feel safe, both physically and emotionally. You said the C, we, the CPS, must ensure that every student feels welcomed, supported, and respected in school by both peers and adults. I feel that you have failed and neglected the children of, especially of King College Prep, in this aspect because I don't feel that that vision is being seen there. As a parent of an outgoing senior, I've seen that constantly, that the adult community there, as far as the LSC, has constantly undermined the students. And we've come to you all for help in this assistent, this assistance, to put a bug in someone's ear to make legislation change in regards to the, how the LSC operates and how things are going on within our schools. It does not make sense, and it's very aggravating and angering, that all you all, when we come to you and tell us, well, you know, there's something that we can do, or we'll send this to this person or to that person. And we're tired of that bug being passed. We need to, for someone to stand up and say, hey, I'm going to be proactive, I'm going to help to make change. And it just does not seem that this board is helping to facilitate that when it comes to our black and, you know, our brown children. And I hate to say, the minorities. We should be a system that collectively works for the benefit of our children to have a safe and comfortable education. And that's hard when we have adults constantly fighting and not being able to facilitate a clear path for our children. We're not setting good examples. I need for you all to stop passing that bug. Please stop. Stop putting it up under the rug. Let's do something now. Now. We're asking you to revoke her contract. Do not sign it. Put in an intern at King College Prep. Do something. Our children are hurting. You want them to have a conducive education. This is not.
Ms. Donegan?
They're not.
Thank you, Ms. Donegan. Our next speaker, please. Thirty-eight, Jas Dunn.
Hello, my name is Jas Dunn, and I am a junior at King College Prep. I wanted to speak behalf of our LSC again. Basically, they have made decisions that weren't addressed to everybody. And they not only have ignored, you know, the students' voices and whatever, they have not only ignored the students' voices and continually, you know, ignored policy, but they've also ignored state policy as well. And I find it very, very confusing that CPS does not value my education and the quality of my education as well. And I, I just want, I just came here to speak today that if people, like, on the LSC or whatever, can get away with stuff like this, and you guys are letting this happen, I'm questioning what, like, why you guys are sitting up here, you know, looking down on us, whatever. But that's technically all I, all I have to say. I know that was pretty short, but, you know, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Our next speaker, please. Thirty-nine, Titania Reed.
I just want to say one thing to you, young man, and the parents who are here. I think our heart goes out to you, but you, I want you to understand that we do value you and we care about you, but LSCs are elected boards. They are elected boards. And the thing that governs them, the law, is the state. It's not us. So if you want some changes made to how LSCs operate, then we're going to have to talk about going to the state. That's the state law. Thank you, and thank you for coming, and we do care.
You're welcome.
So last call for Titania Reed. We'll move on to the next speaker, then. Forty-one, please. Jordan Dunn. Is she going to address the board? Jordan Dunn, please.
Let's continue, please.
I'm Jordan Dunn. I go to Jones College Prep, but I'm here with King and my brother, and I want to show support for the current principal at King. And I also wanted to talk about the LSC. What I had to say was that, like, I've seen the students protest, they've done demonstrations, and the students and parents seem to just, they don't want a new principal. They want to keep the principal they have, and the LSC isn't really representing them. And they've been making decisions on their own. And the LSC has a very, it has, they have a very large responsibility, and I feel that they're misusing their powers by not representing the students or the parents and their opinions. And that's all I really want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. And the next speaker, Mr. President, is speaker forty-eight, please. Jonathan Brooks. Last call. Moving on to speaker fifty, Jasmine Brooks. We then have speaker fifty-five, please. Jill Dunn.
Hi, my name is Jill Dunn. I'm, I'm in 4th grade, and I'm here today to ask you not to make Ms. Seaver the principal of King. I want to graduate this, from this school one day in fear that she'll make it close. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And, Mr. President, there's one additional speaker that I called earlier and was not in the room at the time. If I may call her now, Tanika Reed's, please. Number nine.
Good morning. I stand before you today, a CPS parent and prior student, to talk to you about the grave injustices that I have witnessed in this last few months at King College Prep. I have witnessed critical gaffes in the board, LSC relations, and the LSC at King. Case in point, the Illinois School Code clearly states the board shall collaborate with universities, interest entities, and individuals of other trainings to LSC members on topics related to school operations, their responsibilities as the local school council members, including but not limited to legal requirements, roles, differences, responsibility, and authorities, and improving students' achievement. Incoming local school council members shall be required to complete a three-day training program provided under this section within six months of taking office. It clearly states that the board, the board shall monitor the compliance. It goes on to say that the board shall declare vacant the offices of any local school council members who fail to complete the three-day training program provided under this section within a six-month period allowed. This board and the Office of LSC Relations was fully aware of multiple members of the King College Prep LSC that failed to comply. Specifically, the parent rep, Janelle Jordan, did not receive her training until one day after we submitted our FOIA request. Allowing these untrained appointees to hold these offices caused KCP students, parents, and community members peril due to the uneducated votes that they cast by these, uneducated votes cast by these members. Because the law was clear, it is within your control to nullify all of the votes from the various actions of the LSC. As you read the newspaper and listen to CPS's motto, it's "Look the Other Way," on rogue LSCs who repeatedly failed to comply with Illinois state law and ethical norms, ignoring your rape culture, dishonest, and dishonesty on breaking federal law regarding sped. Because you repeatedly and continue to look the other way, the chickens have come home to roost. Please do the right thing and protect our school and revoke the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with the speakers list.
Okay. I would ask, is I, I would ask Joe?
Yes, sir.
Would you just, in a very summary form, again, highlight the legal authority of the board with respect to the, with respect to the decision of the LSC?
Yes, so the board has no authority to issue a contract to a principal or to nullify or revoke a contract that has been given by an LSC to a principal. All the board does is receive those contracts. The contracting party is the local school council.
I'll make a comment because I want you to understand that we are listening to you and we hear you. You've got a new LSC that will be seated when?
July 1st.
And you will have the authority to exercise your judgments consistent with you being elected and in a way that you feel is more appropriate. You have a new principal coming in. I don't know this principal at all. And apparent, just, just let me finish, please. Let me finish. Let me just say this. When, we have these difficult situations, and they're very, very emotional, and we're, you know, we're angry, you have a right to express yourself and be listened to and addressed to the best of our ability. But the other side to that is, when we, when we're trying to respond, whether you like the response or not, it's a professional and courteous thing to listen without talking, without, without talking over the person that's trying to speak because you're not hearing what you want to hear. So I'm going to go on with this, with my comment to the best of my ability, whether you talk over me or not. And that is, you're going to be empowered in just a few days. You will be able to shape the direction of that school during the tenure of your authority. The, your predecessors had exactly the same power. They made decisions that you do not like and you do not care for, but they made those decisions under the authority of a local school council, the same authority that you will have going forward. You have a new principal coming in. I do not know this principal. It sounds like you're determined not to work with this principal, and that's, that's a path going forward, but I don't, if, it's very difficult for me to understand how that's helpful to the students. The principal that is leaving, who did not have her contract renewed by the existing local school council that had the authority to either renew or not renew. So you're, you're at a very difficult, a very, very difficult situation. You have very strong views, and you're determined that you're right, but there's a whole body of people that had the exact same jobs that you have that thought they were right. And all I can say is, you're empowered now, or will be in a few days. Exercise your authority in the, in the best way possible. Perhaps you want to give this new principal a chance. I'm not advocating for this individual, but she was actually approved. So work with her and maybe give her a chance to be successful or not. That's exactly going to be up to you guys. I respect everything that you've said. You heard our general counsel give you an interpretation of the law. You obviously don't agree with that. It doesn't change what the, what we believe the law says. And I thank you again, and, and, and respect your advocacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with the speakers list. I'll call speaker.
No, we're proceeding now. Did you want to say something? I didn't want to.
To let them know that an investigation, we, we do have an open investigation based on the official complaint we received on this. We can't comment on it, but we did open an investigation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the next speaker will be speaker number four, followed by the designated speakers for Ombudsman Educational, and it'll be speaker thirty-five, Susan Fila, followed by speaker forty-six, Igba Zenda Tegel. Then we'll have speaker fourteen, Alexandra Daxian, and speaker twenty-five, Tasha Ryder, please. Ms. Schmidt?
Good morning. I'm Sharon Schmidt, a teacher at Steinmetz High School, where we had a great year. Our graduates are career and college-ready with so many receiving scholarships. You can read about many of them in our newspaper, which, as usual, was ranked in the top five of Chicago papers in the annual media awards. Other highlights this year, our academic decathlon team was amazing, the NYPD AP dual enrollment programs are thriving for academically advantaged students. Our Arabic and Japanese language students participated in regional events. Students took so many field trips to the Shakespeare Theater and to Hamilton. Sports are great. Our boys volleyball and girls softball won conference. Work has begun on the new track and fields on our front campus. We also had the Chicago Cares come by on Saturday and do a bunch of painting. So just a reminder that Steinmetz is a wonderful school with fantastic students and staff deserving of investment, and as are all Chicago schools. But Mayor Emanuel and a Northwest Side alderman have made plans to build a hugely expensive and unneeded school on the Northwest Side that will harm Steinmetz by diverting a large number of our students and segregating the school. As part of this plan, you all, this board, will be voting soon on whether or not to remove Bridge, Canty, Dever Elementary Schools as Steinmetz feeder schools. At the March meeting, Ms. Jackson said, I quote, "It's my understanding that, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that a very small number of students from those feeder schools currently attend Steinmetz." I responded then that there were 200 students. Seemed to be surprised with that, but it's not a mystery, and that's why I am providing the numbers for you. Of the 1,177 Steinmetz students, 194 live at Bridge, Canty, Dever attendance area. That's 16% of our student body.
Ms. Schmidt, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. And the segregation is an important issue, and I, I won't go five minutes over, but I ask for 30 seconds more.
You need to wrap up.
Okay. So in 30 seconds, I will tell you that of the 194 students that would be diverted, if you vote to change our attendance boundaries, it includes all of the, no, nearly all of the white and Asian students. And right now, we have 14% black students, 12, about 13% Asian and white, and the rest Hispanic. If you vote to move Dever, Canty, and Bridge to another school, that segregates us. And as you know, the Northwest Side has a long history of racism. Schools like Steinmetz, fight that. Our kids are friends with each other. Our kids learn from each other.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next group, please.
And I do have, I'd like to provide this list.
We have it.
With the highlight for everybody. And right now, I just gave it to Ms. Jackson and you, so I'll be giving it with the secretary.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Please state your name.
Good morning, or afternoon now. My name is Susan Fila. I am the Vice President of Operations for Ombudsman Educational Services. I'll begin talking while more group is coming in. Ombudsman Educational Services is pleased to have the opportunity to speak before the board today about the one-year contract extension for our ALOP programs. Since Ombudsman first partnered with CPS in 2013, '14 school year, 844 students have earned a CPS diploma. Many of these students have gone on to college, the military, vocational training programs, and entered the workforce. We are proud of all of our graduates and eager to work with the support of Chicago Public Schools, our students, our parents, and the communities that we serve to provide some of the most at-risk students in Chicago an alternative path to graduation and post-secondary success. Our professional staff ensures students receive rigorous academics to meet CPS graduation requirements. We partner with community organizations to ensure students participate in meaningful post-secondary programs to identify their goals after graduation and help them to get there. And together, we provide comprehensive social-emotional learning. Students receive counseling, mentoring, mental health services, as well as access to dual enrollment with local colleges and universities, field trips, sports, and clubs, college and career fairs, college tours, job placement, trading programs. We are committed to our action plan, which calls for continuous improvement in attendance, professional learning, post-secondary planning, social-emotional learning, and safety and security. Student success is our number-one priority, and we will continue to work alongside our CPS partners to utilize our resources and expertise to best serve the students in our care. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fila. And the next speaker, please. Ms. Tegel.
Good afternoon. My name is Igba Zenda Moses T. You can just refer to me as Mr. T. I am the Senior Principal for Ombudsman Chicago. Ombudsman, as an alternative learning options program under the Options Network at CPS, has impacted the lives of thousands of young men and women in the city over the last five years. We serve students who have experienced a history of challenge and failure. Conscious of this, conscious of our students' past, we provide our students with a new opportunity to experience success in education and academics. We create a safe, welcoming, and supportive environment for our students to be successful. We have a trauma-sensitive staff represented here who provide individualized, social, emotional support to our students on a daily basis. At Ombudsman, we provide our students with a flexible schedule, making it possible for them to pursue their academic them to pursue their academics and also be able to continue to work in employment and jobs in order to make a legitimate earning to support their families. We at Ombudsman continue to provide families with the various opportunities to play a part in the education of their children. We have regularly scheduled opportunities where parents and guardians come in to interact with staff and teachers. It has been an honor, and continues to be an honor, for me and this group of people here, there are about 100 of them plus, who are not yet here, who couldn't get the space, to continue to work with CPS to provide an option, an opportunity, for young men and women in the city to get their high school diploma and to make something of themselves. Thank you for giving us that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
We look forward to continue to work with CPS.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Alexandra Tixian.
Good morning. My name is Alexandra Daxian, and I am the Assistant Principal at Ombudsman Northwest. Here with me somewhere in this group, I have my principal here as well, Mrs. Lintina Langley. I have been with Ombudsman Northwest since 2014, and have grown alongside the students at the school, first as a teacher, then as the dean, and now as Assistant Principal. During my time at the school, I have witnessed amazing things happening in the lives of the students, and I would like to highlight a few of them. Ombudsman Northwest has an enrollment of about 300 students. We are the only campus that offers a third session from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This session supports our working students, our young parents, and it keeps students safe and off the streets. It is because of this third session, as well as our efforts throughout the school year, that we have not had any fatalities this school year. This past year, we increased our attendance rate by 9% and decreased our discipline referrals by 40% due to our implementation of restorative practices and trauma sensitivity. Over the last three years, we have graduated about 193 students at our campus, and this year specifically, of our 60-plus graduates, 20% have been with us for three years. This demonstrates our tenacity to work with our students and to help them complete their graduation requirements no matter what. We have a highly qualified staff who works diligently to ensure that our students are being developed academically and socially and emotionally. This school year, our post-secondary counselor was nominated, and CPS awarded her with the Counselor Leadership Award because of her willingness to go above and beyond for our students. By being a small school, we have been successful in developing relationships with our students, and there is at least one adult in the building who each student feels safe coming to and talking with. At any point throughout the day, you can find a student in every office having a meaningful conversation that allows them to be prepared for our learning environment. Our students leave our school knowing that they were given a second chance and that the adults at Ombudsman did not give up on them. Several students throughout the year return and visit with staff members who have made an impact on their lives--
Ms. Tixian, can you please conclude?
--as well as utilize our post-secondary support. They know our door is always open, and we thank you for your dedication to our city's youth.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker for the group, Mr. President, Speaker 25, please, Tasha Ryder.
I'm here just to share a really quick story about a student who is a graduate in 2017 of Ombudsman. The student's name is Mikhail Lofton. This is a student that we're really excited about. This particular student lives and resides in the Inglewood community. He has 11 siblings. He's also recently received a full college scholarship, which he recently accepted. Ombudsman is committed to all the things that you all have heard today. This particular student I'm speaking about here today was challenged with determining and making a decision as to whether he should accept the scholarship and/or stay in Inglewood to support his 11 siblings. Through the intervention here at Ombudsman, we were able to help this student take the journey and make an executive decision in his life to continue on, accept the scholarship at a four-year college. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Ryder.
Does that conclude all the speakers--
Yes, sir.
--for this group? I'm familiar, as all board members are, of the work. It is very valued work, and it's very challenging because you're dealing with people who come to you with challenges. You couldn't be successful without having a full commitment to the individual students, frankly, a love of what you do. And listening to all of you speak, I didn't hear an overt complaint. What I heard was, you wanted to make sure we understood what you were doing and the value of that work, and I wanted to make sure you understood that we do, and we do value it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. As they exit the boardroom or take their seats, I'll proceed with the speakers list, Mr. President. We'll continue with Speaker number seven, please, Jeremy Hernandez. Speaker number 11, David Martinez. And Speaker number 19, Andrew Wetmore from Pritzker College Prep. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, President Clark and members of the Board. My name is Jeremy Hernandez. I am a part of the class of 2018 and the exiting student body president at Pritzker College Prep, and I will be attending UIC for business. During my time at Pritzker, I prided myself on being not only the student body president, but as well as the head manager for three sports, baseball, football, and basketball. And I come here today because I believe our students need more facilities in order to enhance and grow their learning, both physically and academically. At Pritzker College Prep, we currently have a gym that is really too small for our class sizes to fit in. We usually have class sizes between 100 to 150 students per class. It's often hard to successfully work out without getting in the way of each other, so much so that our PE teachers found creative ways to work around this issue. For example, we use a stage, which is located in our cafeteria, as well as our weight room, but we also condition in the hallways, which, as you can imagine, can sometimes interrupt classroom time and lunchtime. During my time as the football manager, I've seen the football coach get creative and reach out to local park districts to rent park spaces and ex other schools if we can practice on their fields because we don't have the space in order to practice with 30 to 50 players. For baseball, at times, we had to use the gym in the spring because we didn't have a field to practice on during the unpredictable months of spring, or because it was deemed unplayable by the park district. Having these facility issues and space issues stunt students' growth, not only as an athlete, but also academically. Every student should have the same opportunity in regards to growing as a student athlete. Our teachers try their best in order to give us the experience many big high schools have, and are very creative when it comes to making sure their students get the same experience as others. I'm sure our school's administration and PE team would work hand-in-hand with you to figure this issue out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Our next speaker, please, David Martinez.
Good afternoon. My name is David Martinez. I graduated from Pritzker College Prep just this month as a part of the class of 2018. I will be attending the University of Illinois in the fall. At Pritzker, I was involved in baseball, basketball, volleyball club, film club, and MCJ LTC. Fitness and extracurriculars were an important part of my high school experience. The reason I'm here today is to talk about a common theme throughout my high school career, space and facilities. At Pritzker College Prep, we struggled with accommodating our PE class sizes because our gym used to be used for elementary school students. So you can imagine that when a full class of PE takes place, our class cannot fit. So our PE teachers have creatively come up with solutions such as working in hallways and cafeteria. Our weight room is crammed into a tight space, and in order for all the machines to be used properly by students without interfering with one another, part of the weight room is on our stage in front of the cafeteria. During spring and fall, students are led outside to work out on the blacktop, which is a large swimming area, but in the winter, all students have to work out within close proximity of one another. During baseball season, we struggled to find a place to practice. There are many teams trying to reserve the gym, so sometimes when we would schedule an outside practice, it would rain. Most of the time, our practices had to be moved to our gym from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. We often practice inside of the gym during the week and sometimes on the weekends. When we did, we struggled to get much done because of limited space. We hit off of tees five feet away from each other. When our pitchers practiced, a third of the gym would be taken up, leaving the rest of the team to practice within an even tighter space. At the start of every practice, we put mats up in front of the bleachers to shield them because they are made of plastic. We understand that things aren't always so clear-cut and easy, and we make it work with park district facilities. We just ask that you consider all students whenever thinking about facilities, regardless of being a part of our charter network. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And our last speaker, Mr. President, Andrew Wetmore, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Wetmore, and I am a health and physical education teacher at Pritzker College Prep. I also coach baseball and assist with the men's basketball program. I come today with my two alumni friends here that have been heavily involved with the sports programs at Pritzker, and we would love to start a dialogue regarding the improvement of facilities at our school. I can speak directly about the athletic facilities. Just to paint a picture of some of the things that we are facing, our basketball floor has screws and rivets littered throughout, which presents a safety hazard to our students and athletes. We have no real buffer zones from the sidelines to the makeshift scorer's table, the bleachers, and the concrete walls along the baselines, and a leaky ceiling that drips water onto the playing surface during any amount of rain. Our track, cross-country, and soccer teams practice and train in the hallways, which are already under great stress with the sheer number of students that we have, on top of our fitness-related extracurricular activities. As the baseball coach, we have access to only one field and have a great relationship with the park district supervisor there. However, the conditions of the field are in need of drastic improvements. With the help of our community organizer, Luriel Ocampo, and the development team, we have collected letters of support from the Hermosa Neighborhood Association, as well as the Logan Square Neighborhood Association, and elected officials in the area, and have submitted applications for the Cubs Charities Diamond Project and the Cal Ripken Foundation to hopefully have turf field installed at the park to not only use for our team, but so that the community has access to these fields as well. I know that in my position as a PE teacher, my motives are obvious, but I would love to stress that the importance of athletics is not about winning and losing, but rather teaching kids many intangible skills that cannot be taught in the classroom that are equally, if not more, important if we want to see our kids be successful in their post-high school endeavors. Student athletes learn how to deal with adversity, and athletics can be crucial aspects to teaching them determination, tenacity, responsibility, punctuality, respect, and teamwork as well. As you continue to move forward with the capital improvements projects throughout the city's schools, please remember us and allow us to work together to come up with a plan that is fair and equitable to all parties involved. Thank you very much for your time.
You're one of the creative people that are finding space where space doesn't exist.
That is correct. It's all me.
So, Arnie, I know there's no precise answer we can give now, but please make sure someone reaches out. You need to know where you are on our priority list, and I tell you, candidates, it's a long list, but you have a right to know, okay?
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll continue. The next speaker will be Speaker number eight, please, Helena Stengel, followed by Speaker number 10, Freddie Ortiz. Speaker 18, Joseph Rivera. Please proceed.
Please excuse my voice. Good afternoon, President Clark, board members, and Dr. Jackson. I am Helena Stengel, Chief of External Affairs for US out of schools. I am here with, or was earlier, with our students and families and colleagues to celebrate the accomplishments of over, right at about 422 of our students who earned the seal of biliteracy.
Yes.
This includes 30 high school students, 229 fifth-grade students, and 163 eighth-grade students. It also represents roughly a 30% increase over the number of our students who earned the certification just last year. We are especially proud of Marlene and Louz that you met earlier today, who attend Marquez Elementary School and earned the highest scores on the assessment tests among eighth graders citywide. We are so very, very proud of them. Our network of 15 public charter schools has a high percentage of English-language learners, and it's important for our students to have a strong command of the English language, and we work hard to ensure that they do. However, proficiency in more than one language is an asset and a valuable skill that will serve our students well as they continue their educations and go on to pursue careers. So we embrace it, and we work hard to foster it as a strength. We are also very thankful for the engagement and positive work that Dr. Jackson and her team are advancing. Genuine collaboration, concise decision-making, and a commitment toward certainty, for example in the area of budget, enables even greater amounts of this kind of mission-driven work and success. The April announcement indicating a 2.5% funding increase to more fairly and proportionately fund charter schools is absolutely appreciated. However, any chance of mid-year cuts destabilizes any organization or set of priorities, and we really, really, very much want to keep advancing this work. Thank you. Growing budget uncertainty creates significant concern. It's important to foster practices, both programmatic and budgetary, that support students and enable all schools to work from a place of strength. And for that, I thank you very much for your time today.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Freddie Ortiz.
Good afternoon. My name is Freddie Ortiz, and I am an alum from Intrinsic Belmont Craigin's campus. I am part of the 2018 graduating class at Intrinsic. I'm here today to share my high school experience during my time at Intrinsic. I believe that adolescents all from all over Chicago deserve the opportunity to experience Intrinsic and its amazing support system during and after Intrinsic. As I entered high school, I was a very timid person. I was never really one to go up and participate. However, I truly believe that Intrinsic helped me leave my comfort zone. Teachers and staff really focused on making sure each student is able to reach their full potential, both academically and outside of school. I ended up joining track and field, the National Honor Society, and even being captain of the varsity soccer team. Aside from leaving my comfort zone, the post-secondary team at Intrinsic schools has been a great help during my college process. Even though I entered college process with a very limited knowledge, I felt that I left it with more than I would have ever imagined. I felt that the post-secondary team was not only there at any given time to help all students with any questions, they also shared personal experience that really allowed students to fully understand what a higher education meant. I was able to push myself during all four years and was accepted to a program called Chicago Scholars, and can now say that I will be attending Bradley University for Computer Engineering. I truly believe that I am able to receive a higher education because of the great help that post-secondary was. I want to make known how grateful I am that in 2012, the Board approved Intrinsic's opening. For being the second graduating class, it is exciting to see how Intrinsic continues to make a lasting impact for Chicago's youth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. And Joseph Rivera?
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Rivera, and I am another alum from Intrinsic. I am the second graduating class from Intrinsic Belmont Craigin Campus, and it's amazing to hear how Intrinsic's goal is to provide a more personalized learning experience for all Chicago youth through new ways of learning. But I want to give you guys a little firsthand experience on how Intrinsic changed me. So I started off graduating middle school with Cs, Bs, and 1D. I didn't really think school was important, and I didn't really think I would get anywhere in school. I got into Von Steuben Scholarship Program, and I was going to go there until Intrinsic called me and my family and said I was accepted. I ended up choosing Intrinsic. I get into Intrinsic, and everything was so different from middle school, and I loved it. I ended up finishing the semester with straight A's, and I saw the look on my mom's face, and she was so proud of me. And I wanted to keep seeing her happy face and keep seeing her proud of me. So through these four years, I pushed myself so hard to the point where now I got a full tuition scholarship through the Posse Foundation to Connecticut College.
That's really great.
And I graduated-- I graduated eighth in my class, too. They prepared me for what I want to do and where I want to go in my life, and I am so thankful for every teacher and staff member there that helped me become the person I am today. Similar to Freddie, I wanted to make it known how grateful I am that in 2012, the Board approved of Intrinsic's opening. And for being the second graduating class, it is exciting to see how Intrinsic continues to making a lasting impact for Chicago youth and prepare students for the future, just like they did for me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers will be Speaker number 13, please, Marcus Dooley, followed by Speaker 24, Maria Owens. We'll then have Speaker 21, Amaya Miles. Speaker 23, Mary Long, followed by Speaker 15, Robert Lamont. Speaker 20, Sami Gwala, and then Speaker 22, Carolyn Lewis. Marcus Dooley, please, last call. Moving on to Speaker 24, Maria Owens.
My name is Maria Owens. I am the Vice Chair of the Local School Council at Hersch Metropolitan High School, as well as one of the community reps, a business owner, and the advisor to the student council, and a grandmother of a seventh-grade student. I want to say that I'm here to commend you in advance, because I know that once you hear what we have to say, you're going to act and move on behalf of our children, because I know, looking at your faces, how much you care. And I want to just advise you of something you already know, that the Grand Crossing community has been deluged-- community has been deluged by the overproliferation of charter schools in our community and it has served to hurt our students, our community, and our children, and I know you want to put an end to it. So I noticed that Arts in Motion has again asked for an extension and it's on your agenda for today and I'm going to move you and urge you to deny that extension because you have a gem in the Grand Crossing community that I know you want to preserve and know you're dying to do everything in your power to give us all the funds we need to make it the premier high school in the city of Chicago. I know you want to see our students with language art classes, foreign, I saw the emphasis you had on foreign, I'm so excited because you have our report and you see that's one of the things we want to ask you to fund. Foreign languages, a modernized sports program, computer labs, library facilities. I know you want that, so I'm just here to urge you to do what I know you already wanted to. Funding for the Board has been set aside for these underperforming charter schools that could be directed to the best jewel you have in the Grand Crossing community, Hirsch Metropolitan High School, and I'm just asking you to do that. We need advanced placement and honors classes to attract students who are going to perform. If you have a choice, you don't want to have to go two hours out of your way when there's a school right in your backyard. You're going to send your student there if you have the classes there to prosper your kids and your community. You're going to do everything in your power to make sure that your child succeeds if you just have the right resources.
Ms. Owens?
And as I close, I'm just going to ask you to use your authority to direct those funds, to bring those programs right in the Grand Crossing community at Hirsch. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, please. Amaya Miles?
Anaya is not here.
Anaya is not here. And Mary Long?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Long and I'm a community partner with Hirsch Metropolitan High School. And on March 12, 2012, my only child was killed one block from Hirsch High School on 79th and Ingleside. However, since 2012, a team of volunteers, I've came from a dark hole to be standing here today. I've came from the pits just to be standing here today and God has been able to use that tragedy and a team of volunteers have joined Hirsch and partnered with Hirsch through our organization. And since our partnership, we have made improvement. We have went from a Level 3 to a Level 2 school. We have went from a not well-organized to organized. We have, the dropout rate have decreased. We have made some progress with just the hope of an anti-violence organization. So imagine what we can do with more. So we're here today asking you to please review the 600 signatures that we have received from the feeder schools and the parents that, of elementary schools that feed into Hirsch that are begging and asking for a premier high school and a quality high school. We are here today to ask you to please consider giving us funds for Hirsch so that we can have, to be able to have, we're requesting funds for instructors, to teachers for drama, dancing. We're requesting funds for instructors, to teachers for music theory, band, choir. We're requesting funds so that we can have sports, football, volleyball.
Ms. Long?
The school is empty and I've been, and in closing, I would like to say to our CEO, Dr. Janice Jackson, they're looking for you and holding you to meeting with them so that they will be able to present a formal proposal to the programs that they want to see at Hirsch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Before the next speaker, Mrs. McDade?
Yes.
What's the current population at Hirsch?
Right now, they're under, under 100 students are currently enrolled at Hirsch.
No, no, no.
For the upcoming school year.
Well, let's just take, let's just say that between 100 and 112. What's the, what's the capacity of that school?
At least 1,200.
When I went to Hirsch, and, a long time ago, it was overcrowded, actually. It's a great, it's a great building and campus, I take no issue with that. I've never, and this is not to get into debate, I've never understood all of the things that has caused the decline in population. You've got over 600 signatures, I take your word for it, and yet there are only a little over 100 students there. I don't know all the reasons. I mean, you can point to charter schools and say that's the reason, but Hirsch's enrollment frankly has been declining for a long time and I'm not sure of all the reasons why parents are making the decision to send their student, their children to different schools. I had a great education at Hirsch and, you know, I would say frankly it has turned out pretty decent. So I have nothing but a desire to see it successful. There's, it's hard to ignore when a community itself is making a decision. There may be some circumstances that you're pointing them out that ought to be, ought to be looked at a little closer, but there's a lot going on there. I just wanted to have our chief academic officer just give me a few stats very quickly. I would love to see Hirsch successful if that is at all possible. I take no issue, I take no issue that what can be. The question is, it can't be unless parents believe that's the school they want to send their kids to. So, I heard you though. And, you know, I have a great deal, I used to go to all the reunions and see, then you stop going because then so many people are no longer alive, it's depressing, but I hear you. Thank you very much.
And I would just like to say, parents would like to send their kids to Hirsch, but the programs are not there. There's not much to offer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Philo Dreams?
Amen.
Okay.
President Clark, Dr. Jackson, I remember Harper.
Yeah?
And I learned the printing on a platen printing press there and it stood me in good stead. I hope you've read the book, Will War Never End?, by Paul K. Chappelle. I respect him and I learned a lot from his life. Two months ago, I gave you a copy of the book. On YouTube, you can hear and see him if you put his name on YouTube. You have a great responsibility guiding the staff and teachers that shape the minds and experience of students. In the section of this book called "A Manifesto for Waging Peace," on page 3, he quotes Tolstoy. "Fire does not extinguish fire, so evil cannot extinguish evil. Only goodness meeting evil and not infected by it conquers evil." Your attention has been cried for today for sexual assaults, cleanliness of buildings, and the education of the students. Free public education for all is a driving value that we both maintain. I ask to consider removing junior ROTC from the experience of the students and emphasize, in the hiring process, emphasize the goodness and love in the teaching staff and the counselors. Goodness meeting evil and not infected by it conquers all evil. Welcome to Tolstoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Samai Gwala. I'm a member of the local school council at Patrick Henry Elementary. Patrick Henry currently has an excellent preschool program. We have two wonderful teachers and they each teach half-day AM and PM, 15 students, so currently we have 60 kids, and it has been close to capacity or at capacity for many years now. Now, we were told that our program will be converted to a full-day preschool. At first, we were excited. That is a great initiative and I know that it has been pushed by local politicians as well as your department. Unfortunately, the way it's being implemented is not effective. Instead of receiving extra staff and resources, our two teachers simply have been converted to full-day. So instead of the 60 positions we currently have, we will only be able to, to offer 30. That is simply not enough for our community. This is a valuable resource. As you know, the mayor has claimed and is correct in some ways that daily preschool is valuable, important, and if you want to extend this to as many children as possible, we need more teachers, more resources, instead of simply cutting it in half and saying, "Full Day Preschool." Now, the district has the resources. We've seen, just down Irving Park Road from my school, there is going to be allegedly a brand-new expansion to the high school and some of our students go to that very high school, but if they don't have the proper preschool education, how are they going to succeed there? What we want is at least one more teacher and the resources to support all of our families who would like their children to come to our preschool.
Mr. Gwala, can you please conclude?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Clark, I would like to respond to that. At Henry, we, you had two half-days. We converted both of the half-days to full-days, so you will have two classrooms with a max capacity of 40. 29 of the students from last year are returning and right now, you, you have nine students on the waitlist who are primarily three-year-olds. So nine students on the waitlist wouldn't constitute another class opening up. We are monitoring for schools that have heavy wait lists, where there's an opportunity to add an additional space if additional class of space is available, but at Henry currently, both of those classrooms were converted to full-day, so the majority of your population and all of your returning students have been accommodated for full-day and there's nine students on the waiting list.
It's my understanding that for the last few years, most of the applications have come over the summer and while it's great that all of our existing students are accommodated, we would like the same opportunity to be afforded to children who are now transitioning to preschool age.
Notice that I said 29 are returning, the remainder are new applicants. And, and again, I'll mention and I stated this before for another school in a prior meeting, for schools that have the heavy waitlist where there's actually space available and there's an opportunity for another class, we are monitoring that closely to determine if another allocation is appropriate. Right now, with only nine students, it is not, but it is something that we will continue to monitor throughout the application process.
Now, would this be available through the 10th day count or what point?
Throughout the application process over the summer, we will be monitoring that, but once school starts, then there won't be changes that'll be made.
All right. So I just, we need to make sure that parents are applying before then.
Okay.
Thank you for your concern and thank you for paying attention.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches, I'll call Speaker 29, please, Susan Hickey, Speaker 33, Louis Raymond, and Speaker 34, Martin McGreal.
Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Lewis and I stand before you today as a CPS parent and resident of the Uptown neighborhood. I am formally requesting that the Board take immediate action of selling the vacant property at 4425 North Magnolia, the former site of the Courtenay Child Parent Center. The building has been closed since November of 2015 due to water damage. The cost of repairs is greater than the value of the building. In the past two and a half years, the building has increasingly become a blight on our neighborhood. People dump their garbage. I've personally broken up a fight between two children using the chains on the dumpsters as a weapon and recently witnessed youth smoking marijuana on the property. Frankly, it's an ugly little yellow building, often wearing graffiti, and in the summer overgrown with weeds. In addition to being an eyesore, it's wasting significant CPS budget dollars. In FY '17, over $40,000 was spent on maintenance and $15,000 in the first half of this fiscal year. That's $55,000 not being spent on our children's education. That's $55,000 taxpayer dollars, my taxes, my neighbor's taxes, your taxes, being wasted. I've spent the past year in contact with many district offices with little to no response. I'm starting to believe the ugly little yellow building on a beautiful tree-lined street is falling through the cracks. In my opinion, this is a no-brainer. Sell the property, reduce the district operating budget by $40,000, take the proceeds of the sale and consider it a one-time bonus to your capital budget and perhaps the buyers will actually contribute to the tax base in the future.
Thank you very much. Your solution seems painfully obvious. Arnie, I assume you're aware of this issue?
Yeah, I'm aware of it and as you know, the disposal of properties, you know, from the RFP perspective, does require collaboration with the alderman. You did hear Alderman Cavillman today saying he does support the exploration of the process to self, so Frank Belegi, my IGA chief, and I are going to schedule a meeting with, with the alderman and invite other, we'll invite other folks as well.
I take it you have also talked to your alderman?
Yes.
Good.
Very much in support of this.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please. Susan Hickey. Speaker 29.
In keeping with the global city, dobridan veselzim skol. Good day, school leaders.
Thank you.
I think you've got the handout of, you know...
It's coming.
Okay. Just to let you know, I started as a CPS social worker in 1994. My first school was a Chapter 1 social worker at Inglewood High, Inglewood School. I had an incident that were, I was only there like a month and I had to go and do, go somewhere and it was on a Friday. When I came back on Monday, a 2nd grade teacher came up to me and said, a student came up to me and said she was sexually molested by her mother's paramour and she told that student, "Wait until Ms. Hickey comes back." She sent that kid back to the home, you know, to, you know, with that, you know, with the paramour still there. I told the teacher, "I hope the student will talk to me because you've just maybe ruined that and if I do, I will have to make the hotline report and I'll spell your name correctly" because you were the first person that spoke to her. I actually went to court with her because the girl asked me to. The girl asked me to go into judges' chambers because, you know, she didn't trust her mother. She wanted me to go in there with her. Then she asked me to take her to school and she went to the classroom and the kids got up and cheered and she said, "I told the truth and they believed me." And because of that, that's when I came up with this handbook because I felt teachers needed to have a quick summary of how to touch, you know, how to do hotline reports, but also SAS. SAS is for kids that are suicidal or homicidal ideation. In here has the phone number as well and so forth.
Matt, make sure you get a copy of this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey. Our next speaker, please. 34, Martin McGreal. As he approaches the microphone, we'll then have Speaker 40, Ricky Jones, 45, Krista Alston, and 47, Gregory Alston. Mr. McGreal?
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Martin McGreal. I am the Director of Pathways in Education, Schools in Tennessee and in Louisiana, and I'm currently serving as the Interim Director in Illinois. We have school today for our students and staff, so unfortunately, you'll have to look at the two of us without them in there. So Pathways in Education serves at-risk students who have dropped out of high school or in danger of dropping out. I think you know a little bit of our work and Ombudsman talked about the type of programs that they have, but what I want to do today is kind of share one of our core principles. At Pathways, we practice gratitude. We, it's one of our cultural norms, so basically today, I just want to come here and say thank you. First, thank you for what you've done for our students. We now have a little bit over 1,000 graduates since we began. It's 1,000 students in the city of Chicago that were not on the track to finish high school and they since have, they are out, they have jobs, they're in college, they're contributing to society. And then, thank you on behalf of the citizens of the city. I think there's a whole bunch of studies out there, but every college dropout costs a community, they're estimating $292,000 over the course of their lifetime, so these are now, these students are now contributing to the community in Chicago. Next, thank you for your commitment, the Board, the administration, INI, ALAP. I, I work with this program in the city of New Orleans, Caddo Parish, Memphis, and then the rest of the state of Tennessee, and the commitment by this Board and the CPS staff is just unparalleled. And, and again, thank you for your innovation. is just unparalleled. And again, thank you for your innovation. This is an easy problem to ignore. Most times, when a student leaves the traditional school, that's it as far as the commitment on the district. You've brought in the SOAR program to re-engage students around the city, and you're continually looking to commit to those students.
Mr. McGreal?
So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next...
And you're very welcome. I am personally for other activities familiar with Pathways and the good work that you do.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, forty-five, Krista Alston.
Good afternoon. How are you all doing today, President Clark and Dr. Jackson and the entire board? We'd just like to thank you for this opportunity. I am the Secretary for Dunbar Local School Council, and we were here back in September to present our Dunbar STEAM V seventh and eighth grade program. And we're just reiterating some papers again. I know it's been a while, so I'm giving it back to you all. But I'm going to quickly go on. The Dunbar community has elected to develop and implement a Dunbar CTE Academy with focus on early experience for the seventh and eighth-grade students. The goal of the academy is to ensure that the children have the opportunity to explore the options of a CTE program prior to high school enrollment. The development of the curriculum that incorporates STEM, arts, music, entrepreneurship, and trade, named STEAM V, will be the catalyst that promotes trade, college, and entrepreneurship. The STEAM V program drives student achievement, increases enrollment, and provides Chicago public schoolchildren with an unprecedented option for college and non-degree careers. At this time, I would like to read something pertaining to what has happened in this past school year. And like, in this package, you will see some of the problems that we did have at Dunbar and the state of our school. Some of it depended upon our enrollment and the diversity of our learners, our diverse learners population, which exceeded like twenty-five percent and closer, really, to thirty percent. And so, the incoming freshmen that we had was a total of eighty-three students, and that group, out of that group, we had thirty students who were fifteen years old. So, at this time, our freshmen are on track at ninety-five percent. So, we have been working very hard and diligent at Dunbar, because we believe in our school. We have outstanding principal, Mr. Gerald Morrow.
Ms. Alston?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you conclude?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So, we understand that we need to work together. We are a solid team at Dunbar. We're working hard to make sure that this program comes to our school in September. And Dr. Jackson, we spoke to her previously, and she said she could see this happening, and that we have been working very hard, and she knows that we have done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Hi. My name, my name is Ricky Jones. I'm a retired Chicago public school teacher, and I'm the community rep at Dunbar High School. About a year ago, I think we had a meeting with you, Dr. Jackson, and you told us how great you thought the program that we, that we wrote was. And so, we thank you for that. We, as Reverend Alston has said, we've, you know, been working hard to change the dynamics at Dunbar, and we've been able to do that, because we have a great principal, Mr. Morrow, and we all work together as a community. And you know us, you know, you always have some haters, but, you know, we worked through that. You know about that, Dr. Jackson. So, I just wanted to say that I really think this program is important, because what we will be doing with this program is, we have gone out and gotten quite a few partnerships with like ComEd and, I don't know the, like, titles of it. She knew that, so you cannot, she should have said one.
...
Can she tell you the title?
No, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay.
You can't save your time.
Okay. All right. All right. So, anyway, to make a long story short, we need the seventh and eighth grade to, who would be ready to feed into these programs that we worked hard to get, and we really need your support. So, we need to know who we talk to at this point to implement this program. We need a person to work with, so that we could get the portal open. And Dr. Jackson, I just have to say, I congratulate the way you handled the situation. It was, I didn't feel it was fair the way you were attacked with it, and I've said that before. But I think you did a really great job in the way you handled the situation with the sexual abuse, and I just applaud you as a leader. Thank you.
All right. Really quickly, you asked a question. I want to make sure we're being responsive about who you will work with. So, programmatic enhancements do come out of the Chief Education Office. Also, Chief Alvarado is here. The Office of Magnet Gifting and IB is under her purview, and so, we will, Chief Alvarado will be in touch with you. I know that, Willie, you have the contact information. What we really want to do, and this is not an uncommon request for programmatic enhancements, so what we've been doing with schools, school communities across the city, is reviewing, we have an annual regional analysis that really takes a deep look at the current seats within your community, the programs that are being offered, give you some data analytics around the surrounding schools and students that are choosing to come to Dunbar, et cetera, so that you can make a really informed decision about your school and make it a community effort. So, we'll commit to coming out and briefing you on that, so that you are equipped with the right kind of information to engage your community, so that you make the right decision for the school. Because you want to make sure that whatever decision you make at the school is something that is sustainable over time, that will be able to thrive. We don't want to just put programs in a school, and then it ends up not being successful. So, we need to take this preliminary step to make sure that whatever is decided for the school is the right thing for the parents that are choosing the options in your community. So, Chief Alvarado will follow up, and we'll set up a time to come out and meet with you.
Nicole can give you Ms. Alvarado's information. Nicole?
Thank you. We'll continue with the list, Mr. President. The next speaker is Speaker forty-two, Alfonso Gwynn, followed by Speaker forty-three, Louis Peister. We'll have Speaker forty-four, Mariana Reyes, followed by forty-nine, Sandra Diaz, and fifty-one, Ulisa Soto. Speaker forty-two, please, Alfonso Gwynn, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Louis Peister.
First of all, I'd like to apologize. The last time I spoke, I got a little bit too loud at the end. I sound like a crazy person, but that's not unusual. All right. The, I'm going to go to my hotline again. You've got to find someone over here who will take the calls from the CTU, and the CTU on special needs students and on dirty buildings, because you need to get that quickly resolved, so you don't have somebody coming up here in February saying, "My building is dirty," or "Some kid didn't get proper staffing." You need to do that. Jesse went on and on about communication. Maybe that's one of the communications you've got to do, because what I'm going to tell you, it's a soundbite. When they do that, there are people who say, "Oh, the mayor doesn't care. Jackson doesn't care. Clark doesn't care. Furlough doesn't care." No, no one cares about the children. All right? That's soundbites. Resolve it by communication. I worked for Deborah Lynch, and I was one of the point people, that when a problem came up, I gave a call over, and we got it resolved. All right? And if Jesse wants communication, let him step up with communication. Now, the other stuff I want to talk about is Second High School in Inglewood. You heard the people at Hirsch. I'm sure Harper will make their presentation in a day or so. The same thing. Second high school, and now staffing. The number of nurses have decreased. The number of school psychologists have decreased. I think that's corrected. And then, over, social workers have decreased, and you need, independent of the sexual abuse thing, you need student abusing. You need more social workers. When Jesse had the right numbers, nevertheless, you need more.
Mr. Peister?
Could I, please, I need, the librarians, you need to stop firing them. You need to add to them. You need more clerks in that high school. And let me, my final comment is more African-American teachers. I know it is difficult. I spoke to a staff member a few minutes ago, pointing out how difficult that is. Deal with it. But one of the others is the Latino community, the Hispanic. We talked about bilingual education. Well, if you want to look at the number of, percentage of Latino students compared to the number of Latino teachers, there is a gap.
Thank you, Mr. Peister.
A serious gap. And Asian-Americans, look at the number of Asian-American teachers, and I always refer to them as the missing minority, the forgotten minority in the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Peister.
And part of that whole thing with the teacher academy was to allow a greater number of Asian-Americans to have a voice in a school. But it's always portrayed as...
Thank you very much.
Something you're trying to screw.
Thank you.
All right. You've got to get it all in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mariana Reyes. I am a mother for, for, I have four children, two attend a prosor high school and two on Burbank Elementary School. We use the CPS enrollment data from two thousand twelve and two thousand eighteen, and we found out there has been a decrease of the enrollment. In the last two years, and all elementary schools have witnessed the effect building a new school can affect, can affect our neighborhood school. In two thousand thirteen, same year, CPS voted to close fifty neighborhood schools. Uno Clemente Charter School opened their doors, yes, a few blocks away from Burbank. The same year, Burbank Elementary School lost a hundred thirteen students. Ever since two thousand thirteen, Burbank Elementary School has not come close the same or around the same enrollment numbers. Since two thousand twelve, over the years, Burbank has lost over three hundred thousand. In two thousand fifteen, there was also the opening of a new school. Another, another reason why I'm staying, I'm staying here, we need to, you guys, invest in our schools already have. Because we don't need another new school out of Belmont Craig. We want you investing, and the schools already is in the, in there. And it's the reason I stay, I stay here before, to demand CPS need to invest in our neighborhood schools, ready in the opening of the new school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. And the next speaker, I believe, is with this group, Ulisa?
Hello. My name is Ulisa. I am a sophomore prosor and a leader at Communities United. I'm here today because my school faces a lack of funding and resources, and you are planning to open new schools near Belmont Craig, which can have a negative impact on how much funding my school will receive. In my school, when it gets close to the summer, it gets hot and humid and rainy days. This causes the ceilings and walls to become moldy and the roaches to be in this, and roaches to be in the school. And the students are unable to work, because the heat is suffocating. During the last few years, you also let teachers go, because you couldn't afford to pay them, which resulted in larger classes sizes, and students could not concentrate on their classwork. Instead of the money being spent on building new schools, it should be spent on funding schools, so that students can have a better working space. CPS, you need to stop investing money in building new schools, and instead, invest in my school and, in school, in my school and all other CPS schools that we have now. I actually have a report here about the affected schools in Belmont Craig, like Burbank, if you would like to have a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Our next speaker, please, Sandra Diaz. And as she approaches the podium, I'll call Speaker number fifty-three, please, Matthew Lunskin. We'll have fifty-six, Shawnee Smith; fifty-eight, Elizabeth Alba; fifty-nine, Ron Milner; and the last speaker, Speaker sixty, Angela Williams. Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. Jackson, my name is Sandra Diaz, parent at Tonti Elementary School and chairperson for the PAC. I am standing here today with a member of the LSC, as well as a parent mentor. Each of us standing here have children at this school. We are here today, because we are very aware of the lack of space in our school. We are providing you a binder, where you can see for yourself through some pictures. Our school is overcrowded. Our main building and annex, in which kindergarten through fifth grade are held, are overcapacity at almost one hundred and twenty percent. Some of our children have special assistants on the second and third floors, in the hallway next to the stairs, with only dividers between them and the noise of other classes passing by. Also, in these spaces, IEP and MTSS meetings are held with little to no privacy. Our children have to go to see the counselor, and in a converted bathroom. Some bathrooms are currently being used as storage. Also, we have a storage pod outside by the teacher's parking lot that is filled to capacity with equipment such as science curriculums, books, and other things that we have no room for. Another one of our concerns is the lack of a lunchroom in our facility. Currently, lunches held in the gym room for some classes, and the rest eat in their classrooms. The students that eat in the gym walk through the first-floor hallway, where there are tables set up, with lunches in front of the kitchen. It is a tight space, and as you might imagine, it gets crowded pretty fast. On the other hand, for the students that eat in their classrooms, there is a risk of cross-contamination of the students' lunches and bacteria that might exist on the desk surfaces, along with small critters that might be caused by the smell of food or leftovers in small spaces. These are some of the reasons that bring us here today. Our principal has reached out to many representatives and has not received an answer to his requests, which is why we, as parents, decided to come and voice our concerns in front of you here today. We have seen schools in our vicinity being helped, getting expansions or additions, and we only ask for the same amount of help. Every, everything we ask for is so that our children...
Ms. Diaz?
I'm ripping up. So that our children's day-to-day activities run in a more orderly manner, and so that they have an adequate space to be able to learn and grow. Thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to stand here today. We hope to hear back from you. All your help will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz.
Arnie, is that on your list also?
Yes. I can't speak to whatever prior interactions or lack of follow-up, but, you know, Chief McDade brought this to my attention, and I have a meeting with your principal later this week to discuss, so.
Thank you, Arnie.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Matthew Lunskin, last call. Next speaker, Shawnee Smith, last call. And fifty-eight, Elizabeth Alba, last call. Moving on to fifty-nine, please, Ron Milner.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ron Milner, and I drove sixty miles at five o'clock in the morning to get here. I live in the town of Sycamore. I'm going to be very quick, so please bear with me. I was born and raised in Chicago. I lived in poverty on Thirty-Eighth and Ellis, and it was living hell for me and my family. But my mother instilled in us the power to read and learn, because knowledge is power. I went to Dunbar Vocational High School. I graduated in nineteen seventy-six. I was probably a C student at best. Since then, I have moved into the corporate world, and I worked for a corporation. It was a forty-billion-dollar company. I was a top sales rep in that company, only African-American went inside sales rep of the year. Today, I live in the town of Sycamore, about sixty miles west of here. I live in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home. My wife has a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar portfolio. I have a six-digit portfolio. My seventeen-year-old daughter has her own portfolio that will outperform seventy percent of professional money managers. About seven years ago, I created a company called Bootle, because I want to help people. The average black family has about a thousand dollars in their bank account, just enough, maybe, to bury a loved one. That is outrageous. The education that I gave myself over the past twenty years, you cannot get it in a school. I contacted CPS, I contacted CPS about five years ago, and I became a vendor two years ago. And so, my company is moving into CPS schools, and we want to help the average person learn these techniques that you're not going to learn in the school, and you're not going to learn in a book. I went to Fenwick High School in Oak Park, and I did my workshop there. This young lady, a student who was seventeen, wrote me a letter. When I got home from driving, I read it, and it broke my heart. And she said, "Dear Mr. Milner, thank you for taking time out of your week to teach my fellow peers and I about the stock market. These lessons have been so informing and sparked an interest for me. You are so educated on this topic, and I am extremely impressed. I cannot thank you enough for sharing this information. Your story is a true success story, from growing up in poverty to having your own company, Bootle." Bootle. I hope to be as successful..."
Mr. Milner, you have to conclude, please.
I will. I hope to be as successful and determined as you one day. I really did enjoy and learn from you. Thank you again, Ellie Recker.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our last speaker, Mr. President, Speaker 60, Angela Williams, please.
Um, hello, my name is Angela Williams, and I'm a former student at Skinner West Elementary School. Today, I'm here to speak about the reason why I created this story that I'm aware that you've read before. Um, now, this story was made because I was, I was very upset about not being able to graduate, and the reason why is because I decided I needed homeschooling because I was too stressed out at Skinner West. Because of my situation, um, we're not really that wealthy, and I'm going through lots of things with my family, and people don't seem to understand that. And then I was afraid to go back to school because I thought I was just going to constantly, constantly get bullied and criticized over not having what they have, and it's really stressful, and I couldn't work right. At first, I was an all-A student at my old school, but now I'm starting to drop my grades because of all the stress that I'm going through. And now I'm trying to just ask to please let me move on to high school. It'll help a lot, and I just really want to be in a better environment and have a chance to succeed. Thank you.
I've been here a number of times. We gave this publication. I also left a publication.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, but she didn't, the, the parent didn't register to speak. It was only the daughter?
So they are trying to keep me from speaking. I got a phone call yesterday telling me not to come and let my daughter speak, so for some reason, we're being blackballed yet again. So we gave the story, and magically, we're at the end of the list to speak, and now we're being kept from speaking, and people obviously are going over their two-minute limit. So as a parent now, I'm fed up because this is where my daughter come from. This is her art, naturally happy artist. And this is the publication. I left a copy. Every time I leave a copy, it seems to not get to you guys. So this is the darkness that she's come from. Now, these are my other two children. This is my son, who reported to Ms. Clark of Skinner West that someone was fondling and touching on him. They have not properly investigated. The last time we were here, last month, you all, Ms. Jackson, said to come back with a resolution. They have not met with me. I don't know what they're telling you all, but they're not meeting with us and resolving or investigating anything. They take us outside them doors, and then they'll tell us we're about to help, and we have not had any communication since last month's, uh, meeting. And we were told that she will possibly graduate. She is an excellent student. All of my children are. My son still hasn't had an IEP meeting. They're not, they have not done anything. And yesterday, we were harassed. I got phone calls yesterday from Ms. Willis and from, uh, uh, Ms. Buckles, who's not even here anymore. She retired last week. And she said, "Do not come to the board meeting." She was like, "You cannot come and speak anymore." This is what Ms. Ellis, not Ms. Willis. I even have copies of the email. She sent me an email as well, saying she's the chief of school, and so, and told me that I am not, I cannot speak, uh, two months in a row. So my daughter registered so that she could speak, and they still tried to keep us from speaking, and it's clearly, my name is Angela Butler, her name is Angela Williams. So they tried to stop us from coming here yet again. So we're already being harassed. They're violating too many federal laws and all of this stuff. They violated his 504, his disabilities, right? We still have no IEP. They, they are being, they were here as ghost enrollees, so they were getting funded as being in school and have not been there the whole entire school year. So Skinner West is still, were still receiving funds to have them sitting in the chair, and they weren't there. So they've either been lying to you all, saying that they resolved these issues and that they sat down and met with us when they did not. And I am so tired. I have been stressed out in and out the hospital. My children are stressed out. They're tired. I'm worried about their safety. I'm tired. And I know, we passed this out too many times. This costs money to make this, and I know somebody read it. And every time somebody read it, they always say they're going to help us. And she's an excellent student. They've sold her art at Skinner and still had the nerve to still try to tell her she has to pay fees, playing these little mind games with these children. The last time I was at this board meeting, she went for an interview for a job at Gallery 37, showed all her artwork. They gave her the impression that she had the opportunity. After the board meeting, all of a sudden, they emailed her and then told her, "Oh, we're sorry, you didn't make it." And then yesterday, right after Buckles called and, and Ellis called, Willis or whatever her name is, all of a sudden, they said, "Oh, a slot has come," because they know she registered to come here at this board meeting. So they said, "You have to come tomorrow," which is today. They sent the email yesterday, almost 4:00 PM, saying a slot has come. "Oh, but you have to, uh, come tomorrow." That is a bit of a late notice, and they know that she wants to be around other children, and she's an artist. So they're messing with children now. And the first time I came here, I sang and said, "This is all about the children. I believe the children are the future." When I'm out here, I'm representing Chicago. I'm telling people how good Chicago schools are, how I feel safe at first. This has been ongoing, repetitive for the past two, three years. They have not settled anything. My children have changed. They have been straight-A students. My special needs son, he went from saying, them telling him he would never, ever talk. And I took my time out, left school and left work, and sat there and made sure he was going to know how to communicate because I know how nasty and perverted some of these people can be within this system. And now, all of a sudden, they're starting to uncover it. I've been reporting this since 2014, 2015. Someone got away with doing something to him. And they swept it under the rug, and I've been complaining since then. All my complaints keep getting thrown out, swept under the rug. I'm a parent that fully believe that you're supposed to raise your children to be able to give back to their community, to come back and save somebody. But they're making me reluctant to even trust a Chicago public school system at all because it's like these people are getting away with stuff. The moment I start reporting it, they're all of a sudden quitting or retiring, disappearing, and then everything is being kept off the board. People are saying, "We had no idea this stuff happened. Burke applied for grants when we were homeless. None of those funds were used to support us or help us." And this is coming from ISB. They're saying, "We have given money or whatever on behalf of your family. We were sleeping on the floor at 10 South Casey." So if they were giving them funds, where did that money go? They were stealing bus cars from them. They uncovered that. But they still are ignoring, we are tired of being ignored because I feel like if that's what they're going to keep doing, that means everything is just talk. I'm all about action. That's what I'm about. And my daughter has never been like this. So now insecurities, I've never seen people, a person go from being totally happy to dark, this dark art. I can't even, some days, I can't even wake, wake up without my heart hurting, but I have to fight to be here to fight for them. Because this is not, it's not going to end. It's a constant forever fight when you have children in this country. And I'm trying to raise children that can give back to like some of those children that spoke and say they're in poor communities. We are trying to have opportunities where we can come and try to help someone. If possible, we can create jobs where we can come back and give back. But they assume that we were in a homeless situation or whatever. They talked down on us. They discriminated against us. They did not follow protocol on enrolling him at Skinner West. They did nothing. They kicked us out. They said, "We already took two of your children." Those were the exact words. And then he and I were going around in the wintertime in a cold, trying to find a school for him to go to, and he's working with an IEP. His eighth grade graduation from that, they did not do an exiting IEP, but they had him enrolled in some school. They were enrolled this entire year, but they weren't in a school. So now we're fed up. So yesterday, I was already indirectly threatened and told to not come here and speak. So now I'm seeking legal counsel because I want to know why. What, what, what are they afraid of? We're supposed to be all about making change, making things happen, making things better for Chicago, for the public school system, for these children that are going to be our doctors, our board members. But if you bring them up in darkness, they will never be able to see the light. They're going to be bitter and cold, and the world is going to turn on each other. And you think people are killing each other now? People are going to be in emotional distress and just kill each other just for you thinking out loud.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our public participation.
It does, Mr. President. That's the last speaker.
Are there any board members, any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you. I just want to say one more thing.
Uh, before we go into executive session, and there are no more comments, um, Dr. Heinz, you have a motion?
Yes. I move for the passage of motion number 18-0627-101, and the commencement of a closed session to consider matters permitted under Section 2(c) of the Open Meeting Act, subsection 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 21 as specified in the motion.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's.
Okay, the meeting will now go into executive session.
The meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened.
Can you please grab the microphone, Mr. Clark?
Do you want to hear me?
Yes.
Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I will start with closed session items from closed session, and I will begin with continued council retentions. These items do require a vote. First report, the law firm Franzic Rattleit, PC. Second report, Law Office of Sabrina Haykey. And the third report, Hill Law Offices. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's. I will continue with settlements, and these items do require a vote. The first report is the personal injury authorized payment of settlement for Beth Martin, independent administrator of the estate of Mackenzie Flupop, case number 14L010493. The second report, personal injury authorized payment of settlement for Jaina Wright on behalf of Tyrone Page, A Minor, case number 16L001014. The third report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Jamie Taper, case numbers 13WC030857, 13WC030858, and 15WC022540. The fourth report is workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Luis M. Rosario, case number 13WZ09906. And the fifth report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Denisea Rod Hurley, case number 13WZ007302. The sixth report is the workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Doris Crespo, case numbers 12WC041501 and 12WC041502. The seventh report is the workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Catherine Butterly, case number 11WC48055. The eighth report is workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Kevin Dean, case number 11WC022531. And the ninth report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Jose Gonzalo Perez, case numbers 13WC38989 and 15WC37953. And the 10th report is approved payment of proposed settlement regarding GH. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items from this chief executive officer, and these items do require a vote, and they are, the first report, approve appointment of chief internal auditor effective July 16, 2018, John Lombano. I'll continue with one principal contract, new ALSC. It's principal contract, new ALSC for Maria Amador, contract principal at Multicultural Academy High School. And, Mr. President, I'll continue with warning resolutions. The first warning resolution, Rob Amesquita, tenure teacher assigned to William J. Anahan Elementary School. The second report, warning resolution, Sandra Fogs, tenure teacher assigned to Jackie Robinson Elementary School. The third report, warning resolution for Clark Morgan, tenure teacher assigned to Gwendolyn Brooks College Preparatory Academy. And the fourth report, warning resolution, Teresa Tyler, tenure teacher assigned to John B. Drake Elementary School. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with other matter, other matters, non-resident tuition, and these items do require a vote. The first report is adopt finding that pupil is a non-resident of the city of Chicago indebted to Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. And the second report is adopt finding that pupils are non-residents of the city of Chicago indebted to Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote, and they are, first report, resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the discharge of Rob Amesquita, tenure teacher assigned to William J. Anahan Elementary School. For the record, this report also adopts a supplemental opinion and order under separate cover. I'll continue with the second report, resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. And then we have the third report, resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on June 22, 2018, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Boardable 4-1 and 105 ILCS 5/34-84. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and she also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe that board member Ward has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of May 23, 2018 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on May 23, 2018 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, and I believe Member Furlong has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of May 23, 2018, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06b of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
And Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's. Mr. President, I'll continue with a real estate item, and this item does require a vote. Disposition of bids received for the sale of property commonly known as 8407 South Kerf Foot Avenue, former Garrett A. Morgan Elementary School. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with the items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. And I will begin with resolutions, and these items do require a vote. We have RS 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, and I will continue with policies, and these items do require a vote, and we have PO 1, 2, 3, and 4. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with the Communication CO-1, and it's regarding the location of the July 25, 2018 board meeting, and it reads, "This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, July 25, 2018, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m., and public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. For the July 25, 2018 board meeting, advanced registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, July 23 at 10:30 a.m. and will close on Tuesday, July 24 at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person, and the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers." Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items that are on the public agenda that do require a vote, and we have EX 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Dr. Hines on EX 5 for art in motion. I'll continue with EX 6. We have FN 1, PR 1, PR 2. Moving on to PR 3, 4, and 5. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for board member Ward on PR 5 for the Achievement Network. We then have PR 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Moving on to PR 11, and for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that Board Report 180627 PR 11 for IFM will be revised to delete vendor GCA Education Services Central States, Inc., DBA GCA Services Group, and this recommendation is only going to award the contract to Sedexo Magic LLC. So, that board report will be revised, and the final will be in the action for PR 11. The next item, Mr. President, then, would be PR 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. So noted. I'll continue, Mr. President, with additional items that do not require a vote, and we have EX 7, 8, and AR 1. Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board?
Please mark "received and filed."
Thank you. Mr. President, there are no further items on the public agenda, but before we conclude, I would like to read into the record the estimate of taxes to be levied. And it reads, "Report of the Senior Vice President of Finance, Chief Financial Officer pursuant to Board Rule 5-14 and Section 35ILCS200/1860 of the Illinois Property Tax Code." 35ILCS200/1860 of the Illinois Property Tax Code, the code, requires that not less than 20 days prior to the adoption of its aggregate levy, the corporate authority of each taxing district shall determine the amount of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for that fiscal year upon the taxable property in its district. Section 18-70 of the code provides in part that if the estimate of the corporate authority made as provided in Section 18-60 is more than 105% of the amount extended or estimated to be extended upon the final aggregate levy of the preceding year, then the corporate authority is required to give public notice of and hold a public hearing on its intent to adopt a levy in excess of 105% of the amount extended or estimated to be extended in the prior year. Board Rule 5-14 delegates to the Senior Vice President of Finance, our Chief Financial Officer, the authority to annually determine the estimate property taxes to be levied as required under 35ILCS200/1860, and to report that estimate to the board through the Office of the Secretary of the Board. Board Rule 5-14 also requires not less than 20 days prior to the adoption of the board's aggregate levy, the Senior Vice President of Finance shall determine the amounts of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for that fiscal year upon taxable property in the district, and that the estimate shall be deemed an act of the corporate authority upon receipt of the Senior Vice President of Finance report of the estimate by the Secretary of the Board. The Senior Vice President of Finance hereby estimates that the amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation upon the taxable property in the district as defined in Section 18-60 of the code is $3,387,853, and certifies that this estimated amount is less than the limit defined in Section 18-70 of the code. This report is filed with the Secretary of the Board this 27th day of June, 2018, and for the record, Mr. President, we will also be posting this report on cpsboe.org. And, Mr. President, that is all I have for the agenda today.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1762.76][1762.76][music][1763.76]